They'll make the move.
Is there a second?
Second?
Motion, second, all in papers, say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carried. You want to start with the first one, cargo?
Uh, question, what's, when is this current to, to this budget, these budgets?
Um.
May, June?
May 31st.
It's current to May 31st?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's five, five months in.
Yeah.
Those are the commissioner stuff we just leave the same as it was? Don't worry about it, got a 50% raise. Quite the, quite the professional. Fee jumps high last year. Is it election, do you pull stuff out for election year out of ours or something, or is there something? I guess I'm Perry's, 32,000, 9,000, 2,000.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
And let's see, in 17, I don't, I think what happened in 17 is that we ended up paying two audit budgets. I'd have to look back and see, because that was 32,000, and then in 18...
Couldn't have seen it though.
It would have been, uh... Paid in 18, and also I think in 17, one of the things that we paid out of there was, uh, we had to redo the mitigation plan for, uh, emergency management, and that was paid out of there also.
Okay.
We are doing an audit again this year. They started.
It's coming here?
Right now they're doing it.
Right now they're doing it. They do it every two years on the even numbered years, and they've already started on this year. So they'll audit 18 and 19 this year, and 20.
That'll be done when, by the end of the year probably?
Supposed to be done by the end of the year, I think. That's their plan.
So the tentative cost of that would be?
I think last year was 11,000 or 12,000.
Yeah, it was right at 12,000 last year.
Okay.
And we never know about the billing, sometimes they bill them to different.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I can go back and print out the checks and see what was paid if you want to look.
No, no, I was just intrigued. So you figured about the 76 is about what we're gonna need again this year?
I...
Usually we increase the liability insurance a little bit.
Yeah, I would say most of it, but the liability will probably go up a little bit.
To what, 9,000?
I usually add 15,000.
Yeah.
Does it go up that much every year?
Uh, it doesn't always, but, um, then we have it covered.
Right.
It varies so much.
I mean, you could leave it on the contingency if you have to.
Yeah, you could do that too.
Something like that.
I mean, it's only gone up $200 the last, for 17 through 19. In fact, it went down.
Yeah, it just depends on where men's cop.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what we just guess.
Yeah.
Whatever you guys think on that one. Sure.
Is there a reason why I don't know what happened there? I just have our state's attorney's budget information, that's it.
Um...
Are they probably?
How it's a work in progress, so I don't know, is there a D?
I would, I would imagine. I would imagine you only get one when we approve one, right? I mean, you don't... I don't know. Or does the paper help approve the budgets too? I would guess it's public information.
Well...
But I would think the commissioner's budget's okay for now.
You don't need to leave it at the same.
Huh?
Leave it at the same.
If you gotta, if you're gonna end up, you don't know what year that, you're gonna get that bill for your audit, right?
Uh, they should have partial billing for sure this year.
Is there another audit scheduled for next year?
No, but sometimes if they don't get their billing done at the end of the year, then we have to carry them. That's what happened last year. But I got it, I sent them the information early because COVID, they're working from home, so I would expect them to have it done.
So leave it?
Better.
76, so you need a motion of that? We're just waiting until you're all done and just approve it all, but... These are all preliminaries, you have to know how to pre-put all of the stuff in it, then maybe approve the preliminary, then after they, see if the numbers come out, and then... Contingency is probably good to me. Right, so once you get everything set, we didn't move stuff around to make everything work out later? Yeah. The contingency? Then we always run short, or so we start adding a little to it. Right. So how much is fine? So like Nick, these, these if you run over and you got money left over, just goes back into the general, or they don't stay there? No, no, because it is in the general, these are. It's just a... So like if there's money left over in the contingency, then it just rolls back over into the next year? Yep. Yep.
For the computer software, we have the, add the new e-pole books license fee.
That's an every-year deal?
Yep.
Whether you use it or not, huh?
Yep, same with all the election equipment.
Like they updated the three elections.
You have to pay the license to have them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the capital outlay?
That's just the, the equipment.
They need more equipment?
We just leave it in case we have to, like we have to repair one of the express books. There's two of them right now that needs fixed. We just left it, I guess, the way it was.
Like, shouldn't that let bottom number, oh, is it 16? There, what's, what's the bottom number between the two?
Six.
It's more than that. Yeah, it should be four and 10,000, right? Yeah, close to it.
No, I wrote this on the online, this bottom one's only two. The capital outlay.
Oh, the capital is two.
I just wrote it on the line. The total is six.
So she, they're putting down six, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just carried it down the line.
Okay. I see.
This one, we didn't really do anything with yet either, the court.
Oh. Quote for the carpet? Yeah. Here was a quote on some new carpet up there, we looked at that. He's got it there.
Here's a piece of carpet they just put in the Catholic church.
Commercial grade carpet.
Back in the day when Patty was Patty, Patty Freeman would not...
Frey, Patty Rhodes?
Patty, yeah. She just brought it up that if you're gonna do something, or you may wanna paint first, or you do it for...
Makes sense. What are you supposed to cost to paint the courthouse? Or the courthouse, courtroom, courtroom.
I... I could try my wife or somebody that's in the business, but I, I wouldn't have a guess.
I know Kim's been wondering about painting stuff, do, I could call her.
Who? Well, about getting any, uh, she'll know what paintings were. Paint's the cheap part. Right, I was just trying to think, we just get a rough estimate on it, so we can make sure we got enough to cover it.
My one's first would be my last, about 40.
Is there somebody in town that does painting?
Not anymore than I do. We're looking at getting next year, just the trim around the windows and stuff at the church done. That's just doing around the trim on the windows and, and taking the screens off and doing that, and that's gonna be about 6,000 bucks. But they're gonna have to have a high lift and stuff like that to get to some of that area, so...
Use your mind here, we're talking about the courtroom and, uh, the courtroom in the courthouse? About painting it, and if you could try to give me a guesstimate, I, Nick, what, what, what would the dimensions kind of be? Uh, let me get by the window.
The courtroom, he's, he's been in there.
Oh, Perry, can you hear me now? Anyway, we're contemplating painting the courtroom, but we don't even have a clue, you know what paint and labor would say?
Guy just budgeted $10,000, it'd be fairly close, okay? $10,000 total for carpet and painting? Well, that, that would probably fix him the, where the plaster's coming down. Right.
There's a bunch of those.
Yeah, I meant like, uh...
You mean, be close? That's around the windows.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what happens is the con, or the metal windows?
Well, I'll try it later when I know more.
Bring that cold in, and then that plaster absorbs the moisture off of it, yeah. Cause we done that, we redone it when they put these windows in, when was that? 98? Some years ago. Around 98 or so, isn't it? So if a guy just budgets $10,000, gives off a little bit, we can move stuff around. Just gives us a pretty good idea, gives us a pretty good baseline. Would you put that under each?
I don't know that they'd even really go in the courts, won't they go in?
No, courthouse, courthouse. I would guess. Okay.
Or in the building?
I guess you could put it on this, this box.
We've been doing 8,000 for the trials and stuff, I guess.
I think that'll be enough, it will be if we don't have any problems. Right, we, we can supplement stuff. If we do. If we. Yeah.
Wanna leave it at the same?
Uh, yeah, did you, should we put that just on here though, that way it's just four in the quarter, courtroom, that way it's... Courthouse gets a little bit, or maybe it's...
The courthouse building funding?
Right, is that where you want to put that?
I don't care.
I was just trying to think how it'd be easy to keep track of it, could be a better way.
That's what I thought.
Patty, we can, I think you want to put her in the desk though.
Oh, you want to put it in there?
Would, would that make any sense to you, or is that way, we know what's for that, it's...
I could make another line, so it's a courtroom where repairs or something.
Yeah.
That way it's...
Yeah, maybe we should do that.
Because it's, like right now we're doing the tuck pointing, and then all those other things that are gonna be coming out of there, you wouldn't know exactly where it's coming from.
The only way you can tell is if it's going out.
Or going. You know, that might not be a bad idea, just to do that on a line item for every one of the offices, and then that way you know what you're putting into that. Right. So let's maybe do another line on that as, um...
Most of the office has the repairs and maintenance.
Yeah, put a repairs, maintenance under those.
I could add one for that.
I know, might be a little more confusing because you're doing it to the courthouse, but then again, we can budget doing carpet, or not carpet, but flooring and...
Yeah.
Every office and stuff as we go.
Basically, yeah, that kind of should come out of your office budget, cause building fund is more for your...
Structural.
courthouse building, structure, that was my...
So we can put $10,000 on the courts?
Everything else seems fine. We don't really have too much further than the trials, but...
So you're gonna call it maintenance and repair?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I did. Uh, I'm trying to, just like the court, courtroom, you know, I'm trying to get a, just a little bit of, figure out what it would cost to paint it, and I know, yeah, but who would be a go-to? Okay. Yep, thank you. No answers.
That's okay. Yeah, we got it handled. We put $10,000 for maintenance repair on that one. Mike, this was... Digging up a new line. It was like courtroom, the judges' chambers, and something else. The, the carpet.
Probably the jury boxes.
Jury, jury area. Judges area. Just where the carpet is now. Okay. So all the scenes are starting to come up on the, well, in fact, Mike Moses said he'll put that carpet in when Reckling was doing it. And maybe Kim will want to paint it or something too. I don't know. It's easy, cause you could, you know, you got wheat to disround it. Yep. Nobody bugs you. But you gotta have scaffolding and everything else if you got to do it. Oh, sure. That's 14-foot sidewalls in there. I remember redoing the windows. Oh, sure. And I don't know, I, I really think that, that Kim might be interested in doing that, but I think we should probably just get outside, you're taking a little of her time away from her other duties to do that. And I'm not sure she's got that much time when you're trying to keep this whole building up. It's a big space. I guess a good question for her. For what? I got a guy should ask her if she felt like she had enough time, or was interested in doing it, I guess, I don't know. And I think maybe on smaller offices, maybe that'd be fine, but like that, that's a pretty big room to have her tie up to do that, and like say need scaffolding and everything like that, that one, okay, Mike. Big area.
Well, if they start on, they have them on.
Our insurance jump that much?
Um, we always add 20%. Are you looking at ours? But we never know, I think one of them said they weren't commissioning, was it the vision or the dental?
Um, I hope the vision order then not really change. Vision is not ready to change until renewal, which is October 1st of this year. Dental runs from January to December, so that one will stay, also stay the same.
There's one that's in Jim or something.
The SIS is in June, and it's the same until June. It hasn't been changing, so... Hard to tell.
I guess the one we don't know about is Walmart.
Wendy, oh yes, she has information on it.
And we figured our wages with the 4% increase, and everybody else figured their own wages, so... Not really sure what, so you'll have to decide what you want to do there.
Right now the deputies all make 17.
I think that's, I think 4% is 17, 16. But like I said, if you go through to the next ones, the wages are all different. Everybody filled out their entry.
I guess I was thinking to suggest just leave all wages and everything the same this year, and just, just for the insurances and the... Taxes and all that, for now. What's paid out of other expense?
Postage, 15, 14 feet. Our post office lot, the...
Yeah, we used to get, um, envelopes that had stamps on them, and it's cheaper if you buy envelopes and then put stamps on them, so then our postage has been over.
Why don't, why don't that come out of supplies?
It can.
It could, I guess, we could... Can compare them to see what the difference was.
Oh, it just looks like a big jump from less than $200 to 800. I mean, with you on the wages, I think they were given that pretty healthy wage raise last year. For now, anyway, I didn't, where they're at. That's my opinion. We're on page five, really hasn't been no changes or anything, except for the courtrooms had. We put a budget in there for carpet and it's painting. Is that what this carpet, carpet remis is? Yeah. What is, what are we eating for equipment? I just don't know, or?
No, we never know. Carlos' computer is older.
Yeah, so...
But you might have enough budget money left in this year just to take care of that if you did, right?
Maybe.
How old are your computers?
One is new.
Yeah, the back one we replaced this year.
I think it's 15, I got you a gun. It's a 15.
The other one is, was from what?
Mine is, the one in the back room is new because it wouldn't update anymore, and they...
But out one, yours, oh, it's yours?
I think I got it, it's a 15 or 16, I have to look.
And that one's from 18.
You got yours what?
And two out of each.
18. So you're probably getting about due then?
I talked to Ron, and he said probably every four to five years we place them, because of...
Yeah, I, I figure if you get four years out of a computer anymore, you're doing pretty good.
Something usually goes on that.
When you go new and you get to the, when those tend, you just really appreciate not having it.
I wish.
Struggling with that, or still do, but they made them to be so user-friendly, and they come out with something new, they're gonna sell off the shelves wherever they go.
Do you guys go through these one by one, and then at the end decide, or do you decide that, like each one, as you go?
As we go, then it goes into their computer, they put it all in and see how it all comes out, and then... By November, or by the end of September, is it, or?
By the first meeting of September, you have to...
Have the preliminary.
Publish it, if you want to be in compliance with the law. Have to publish it in August, and you have to, uh, approve it by first meeting September.
They estimate it 20%? I mean?
Hopefully, I don't get it.
No, 20. Well, some of them did, some of them didn't.
Just when will you find out when the insurance goes? We won't find out for a few months, really?
I usually don't find out till October. On the first of October, you'll call me or you'll tell me. Cause that's when they put their reads.
That's just on the Walmart, so everything else.
Yeah, everything else is good until the next three weeks.
All the other ones are mid-year.
I guess on the wages, I guess suggest sticking with what we had.
So in other words, about one forty-two, oh, forty-nine on the bottom line then. If you take off that. Three thousand.
Which three thousand? Which one did we do off?
Salary, you took easily that.
You'll have to take off all the.
Yeah, everything, except the insurance.
Oh, social security.
They're figured based on your wages, so everything would be the same down to your insurance.
This plus.
The group insurance would know, right?
Right, this will give you a rough idea of what you guys need to change. I haven't given them, sorry, cause I, I'm not smart enough to do all the numbers.
Or okay, just change the salary back to the seventy-seven, four twenty-four. And then adjust everything accordingly.
And I hope the insurance don't go up that much.
Yeah. Okay, so same way with the treasures. You go back to the last year and then adjust everything down.
Um, everyone filled out their own.
Right, but that's.
So you want maybe for your twenty percent on all of them, because most of them don't have enough money figured for the insurance.
Yeah, I don't know about the treasures, how you figure for it.
Why is it social security?
Be that much of a change?
Everybody figures their own wages usually.
Yeah, they figured their, their own stuff this year. So it's first gonna go back to the wages they had last year, right? Make sure there's.
And do you want me to adjust the insurance, everyone's insurance?
That's what I'm trying to decide. Does that wants to go at twenty percent that high? Or do you think we either do fifteen percent and see where it falls? I mean, maybe.
Okay, if you do fifteen percent across the board on all of them, you have a little cushion because accidental won't change until next January. The vision wouldn't change until October first. Your SIS will change until, if they didn't change at all, until June, the same with the life insurance.
So fifteen should be fairly good coverage, you think?
I think we did twenty percent this year because I was a big.
There was a twenty-five percent jump last year.
Yeah.
I wouldn't think they'd pile it on your keys.
Wouldn't think.
So do you want me to change the insurance down to fifteen?
Yes.
I think so.
I don't think that social security needs to be that high, the treasurer's office.
Yeah, that.
The other offices didn't change.
That all changes with this.
Yeah, but look at the difference between like this office and this office.
Yeah, every office did their own sheet.
I don't agree with that one.
They fixed their own wage.
They fixed their own wage and then figured it, but if you look at for twenty-twenty, it's like the auditor's office and the treasurer's office, I mean, they just could be the same.
Yeah, there's a huge increase in the treasurer's office, where there isn't one in the auditor's office.
That's because we figured the wage. So every office figured their own stuff this year.
Right, I understand. I don't agree, I don't agree, I guess, with that other one.
Right, because it's on a scale.
So you guys did it twenty-twenty, they have the years, you guys have done every office?
Every office should be.
And this year, everyone decided to do their own budget?
It could have requested that anybody did their own.
When did it all request that?
Request that?
We all didn't request that.
No. I don't know who did request it actually, but.
Also on the treasurer's side, don't agree with all the increases.
Yeah, that's where I'm at now, right? Right, treasures, yeah.
Yeah, for supplies, they went up twenty-five hundred bucks.
Well, workman's comp went up two seventy, fees went up five hundred fifty, dues went up sixty. Maintenance went up a hundred, supplies went up twenty-five hundred. Um, three hundred for travel, four hundred for telephone, three hundred for postage.
That's what happened for the end, everybody do their own.
Eighteen hundred dollars for equipment, additional.
So we can just turn that one all back to where it was in twenty-twenty?
Oh, I don't know if the workman's comp will be enough, I guess. Cause they were five ninety, six twenty-two, so sixty might actually be.
Nineteen, they were six twenty-two.
Where were we? Saw that, six twenty-two.
Two twenty nineteen.
So six eighty might actually be accurate for next year.
That's only sixty bucks more.
Cause doesn't she have two, she has two insurance, so that's why they're bonded. Apparently they're bonded.
Do they just pay that once a year? Nothing's been taken out for it, yeah?
Exactly, because we have the insurance through S and South Equitable League.
Oh, yeah, and their bonded insurance. They have an extra insurance in the sheriff's office too, they're bonding.
Do you want to talk to her about what she was thinking or do you need to talk to her?
Yeah, maybe there's a reason why.
Yeah, I don't know why you'd like the equipment, why you would need another eighteen hundred over what you had last year. She's only spent thirty-six dollars.
Need to ask her why. I don't eat, unless I had all them highlighted too. But there might be a reason to.
I warned you.
It's actually a, uh, over twenty thousand dollar increase over last year's budget. For one office.
What would you do if you were filling it out?
I'm glad I don't have to.
You go high and hope, hope you hit somewhere in the clear, right?
We shouldn't have to go through it all ourselves.
I never did total it. Did it total on that page?
What determines the salary? Like the auditor and the treasurer's office are all less than eighty thousand dollars.
This is just what they're speculating.
But the director of equalization and the registrar fees are only at fifty-eight for twenty-twenty.
I'm just asking, remember the public, not just the newspaper, I'm just wondering.
Uh, the public doesn't come to, to do the budgets. I mean.
They can't ask questions?
They can ask questions when the budget's done, not during the budget.
Primarily through the F D B.
Right. We set.
Treasurer and the auditor were canceled. Oh, they were splitting one, right?
Yeah, we set the wages at the beginning of the year, every year, just like, you know, the resolution is where, but this, you have to have it all itemized out as far as.
Okay, let's go.
So do you want me to wait for all my questions till the end?
That, that's good. Um, end of the discussion, we're able to have the lady here.
Welcome in. Wait, just had some questions, I think, all righty?
On the increases, Harla, on the bottom part there, you got, you got about, I think I added up with sixty-two hundred and eighty dollars in increases in your, in your budget.
Like twenty-five hundred for supplies, I guess, is one of the questions. How come such an increase in supplies?
Um, I'm not exactly sure. I'm not really thinking when you're gonna have to upgrade the motor V computers.
You, to do what?
Upgrade the, the computers upfront, the motor V computers.
That comes out of supplies?
Um, that would actually probably be, yeah, some equipment.
Equipment, between those two, you're forty-three hundred bucks, the equipment, you're thirty-eight hundred. Eighteen hundred dollar increase.
Yeah, the paper was quite a bit higher, but that's. I'm not exactly sure, I'm not gonna lie. Um, what I was thinking when I, or what I, what I specifically had in mind when I wrote that.
Because it looks like, um, in nineteen, you spent just about four thousand, but this year so far, you've only spent about a thousand.
On supplies?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Up to the end of May.
Actually, that printed in, in May, but the, okay, we paid, we would have paid May's expenses in June, so it would actually run four months instead of.
So this is back to April.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I tried to backtrack on the days.
And I might have just written it wrong too.
So that four thousand's about right there? For supplies? For this year, it looks like.
For the, yeah, it will be for this year, cause yeah, my postage budget ended up going over.
We put another quote leaving in the supply.
That was part of it. Yeah. Yeah, I might have just written that wrong, I'm thinking of something else.
So back down to four thousand on that?
Well, I would think we would want to up it some because the process of paper and stuff is definitely going up. For the tax statements, all that stuff comes out of our budget. And obviously, we don't know how much it goes up until we have to order it.
How come the postage has gone up so bad?
We've done a lot more mailing with the whole COVID thing. Of everything. We've had a lot less people walk in the door, which is not all bad. Although I do miss seeing them, but, um, we've done a lot more mailing. And I got envelopes too. The postage includes the envelopes. It's not just the stamps. I bought, um, I think I got like four, I don't know, a few thousand envelopes. So that we're ready for, for, um, next year when we do our tax statements. And that's in there too. What did they?
You wanna leave that equipment over?
Yes, cause we're gonna have to be operating those two computers upfront that we do our motor V stuff on. They used to be the state's computers, but they're not anymore.
Or were you adding supplies then, you think?
Forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred?
Your professional fees are going up five hundred?
Wow, that depends on what he charges to put in the new computers and whatever he needs to do, it just.
Or installation.
Does that broke out from the equipment?
Hmm?
Does that broke out from the equipment then?
So the, the increase for like social security, is that strictly based on the increase of the salary?
Um, in all honesty, I guess I just put an increase on there because there's going to be an increase, but as far as I know, we don't know what they are yet. So I just put an increase on there because it's gonna increase.
It depends on, yeah, it depends on what the salary is. It's a certain percent of the salary.
What is the percentage of social, you know, social security?
Six point two.
Percent?
Six point two percent. Medicare is four point three, yeah.
One point four five. Is that all the questions yet for Harla? There's someone waiting at her office.
Yeah, I'm okay. Thanks, Harla.
I feel dirty, just a minute. Can you get out?
Six percent, only four and a half. That's not two thousand dollars, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That's what I was getting at. It's not even anywhere near. I mean, Carlos, Carlos is about right.
Yeah.
But that one, these other ones are. They're not close, yeah.
And no matter what that number is, when you get all said and done, the salaries are set by us, that doesn't change anything anyway. Is that correct?
If you set the salary the same, your social security and Medicare and F D R S will all be the same.
Right, but I mean, and the six percent, I'm saying you, these numbers aren't, don't jive between themselves.
No, I think she just, she just filled it in.
Right.
Most of them have never filled it out before.
Yeah. We don't know what the percent is here.
So we just have that to stop to you or us?
Forty-five hundred on supplies, are you good with that?
What did I put on there?
Forty-five hundred, she said on supplies.
On supplies, yeah.
That's what I.
What'd you put down for postage?
The postage, I left, there was only three hundred dollars more than what they were getting last year. I just left, yeah.
She only spent.
Hundred.
Not even a thousand dollars in sixteen months.
In four months.
No, she never spent seven hundred dollars. Eight hundred bucks.
We would drop that down to what? Back down to twenty-five hundred, what we did last year?
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be any more.
Twenty-five hundred?
I, I.
Shouldn't need that, she's got four thousand envelopes.
Yeah, she's got the envelopes. Two thousand?
And I just leave it at the twenty-five.
Okay.
Is that the only two you want to change?
Yeah, as far as I, you. Save anything else?
Carlos is gonna adjust these numbers anyway.
Yep.
I'm all right with it.
All right.
State's attorney, we already pay more than what the state. State's attorney, we already pay more than what the state goes, so I think just leave that pretty much. Where it's at, don't you?
Only thing that'll change is we took out the, you guys want us to move the lab fees or whatever?
Oh, yeah.
So you'll have to remove the, we put a thousand for professional fees.
An increase of a thousand?
No, that's how much we budget for lab fees, that's a thousand.
And they want, that's going into the sheriffs now. So, take that thousand out for those professional fees? Yeah.
Don't they have any professional fees our association have to pay?
Membership fees. They got a membership fee there of fourteen hundred.
Their professional fees, if you take the lab fee, that would be like the computer work, if someone comes in and repairs the computer or installs the computer, that type of thing.
How about for the update, like on the code, code book? Where's that come out of? Wouldn't that come out of professional fees?
Um, usually that's been on the supplies.
Mike, is that our code, or the state's attorney's codebook? It's, well, our, we purchased a state's attorney book that Gay had, and supposedly that, I'm assuming it was passed on. I, I would say it's our book, from, from the records we show. We purchased one and it went to Gay and then, I'm not sure where it was.
McKnight, McKnight's, where it's.
McKnight's, and, yeah, so I'm not, as far as I know.
And, yeah.
So do you want to move some of the professional fees or move the whole thousand?
Move the whole thousand?
We have multiple.
That jumped a lot, didn't it?
Yeah.
Would she travel, like, save the officer does?
I don't know, do they?
They, um, have a state's attorney, um, conference convention, yeah.
I think it was in Deadwood.
Yeah, off the, I don't know if all of the Deadwood, but, yeah.
Maybe, maybe it's not out of line, I don't know. I don't know how much, just looking at other, other offices' travels. Somewhat similar, yes. The salaries, that include part of all these two, then? So that's what, part-time, close to whatever.
She gets like eleven-twenty-two a month, yeah.
How much?
It's like eleven-twenty-two or something.
Travel fifteen hundred, I guess, so, it'd be a lot different.
But in the last, past five or years, it hasn't cost that much.
Sheriff must not go very much, 'cause this is really low.
He doesn't really go to any conventions. They've been doing, um, civil disturbance meetings, but that's about it. Did you want, it was, the state's attorney wanted them? Leave the same and then move the professional fees?
Even the.
Take it out, virtual.
Even the lab and travel. Thousand.
What's that?
Even for the, we travel a thousand.
So you think you should move it to a thousand?
No.
Obviously, so you can.
This is obviously, it's always, not really out of line.
Just in case something comes up.
Lots of. You're close.
Yeah. I don't know, I just give that. If, in the future, if that's in the works or not, I don't know. Oh, I'm gonna ask about the budget.
What's that?
Can you pass that down, please?
Maybe we should leave that travel, it is, I think just leave it.
Leave the travel?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We really don't know where we're going, we just leave it.
So now you're on court appointed attorney, I just left the same, because we have to supplement it all the time, so. I don't know, left the supplement again, now.
Those things that I got on here were like fifteen hundred dollars a year.
How much?
Fifteen hundred? And at work, the support of the poor.
No.
mentally ill. They have like two to fifteen hundred, two thousand maybe, in those budgets, and it's funny.
No.
Now look at it.
Yeah, I have a bill that will be submitted for seven thousand again, so, it's gonna be over again.
The court appointed carries. Yeah, they charge you whatever they want.
Yeah.
So, send you over.
It'll be what breaks the county eventually.
Right. My payments are getting tinier and tinier, too. So, we're not recouping quite as much.
Is there anything you can do, like file wins or something, or?
I do file wins, but.
Nobody collects them?
Uh, we have a collection, you do, but.
You don't do nothing?
Well, they try, but.
Yeah, a lot of these people can't find you.
Have a list of probably fifteen to twenty that are collections. Just 'cause they're collections doesn't mean they have to pay.
Do you wanna leave it at thirty, then?
I don't, I don't, it seems like most people, you had a couple, don't have money.
Right. My recoup amount does not.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I would leave the same, I guess. Hopefully, those are, yeah, it could, it could be ten times that, be realistic. Yes. That's it by your tongue.
Well, I mean, it could have.
Checking machines.
Yeah.
Who's, who's.
Sorry, I saw the courthouse.
Just killed.
Just killed.
Yeah.
Just, okay, yeah.
And you want me to move that one back?
Yep.
Okay.
And then I guess her insurance will be different, 'cause she doesn't take, you know, except. Life insurance.
Do you think we should, oh, go ahead. How come her professional fees are so high?
The elevator, monthly elevator review comes out of that.
Oh.
Week three.
We had a week's break, and she also has, once or twice a year, but they spray her bugs like in the basement, you know, the foundation.
Didn't Matt come out of that, too? Is that professional?
No, not supplies.
Oh, yeah.
The server.
Yeah.
But I see she didn't raise the fuel, and I don't know where we'll be at with fuel.
Yeah, I think.
That all depends on the winner, right?
Yeah. The, uh. While we're there on the courthouse, the, uh. Looking at that, you know, we talked about an approved getting a new shed. Well, to put, the shed needs to have a six-foot door in it to get that lawnmower in. And to build it, to have a shed that big, you have to have a fourteen-foot wide block. So, what we looked at won't work, and, uh, a fourteen by sixteen with, uh. With a six-foot roll-up door would be right at three thousand dollars. So we're just about doubling with the money on that.
Could a guy put swing-in doors on?
What? Yeah, but then if the snow's there, you can't, you gotta shovel it out to get to, get to them, that's why we were gonna go to a roll-up door. Because that's the problem they have now, is they swing open, but you can't, you can't get to it to.
I'd vouch for that.
And that was why.
Vouch for what?
Shoveling out the door so you can open them.
It's gonna let it go in.
But I think whenever we take a little break here, uh, we should just go down and kinda take a look at that whole situation down there, because there's a lot more involved in that. And I got Gibson, what?
Preach?
Yeah, uh, I talked to Gibson and got an estimate of, or a quote on, uh, doing, retaining a wall around there so that we get it down to the pad level. Because everything's above that. And on that south side of the shed we have there now, it's starting, it's gonna start rotting it away because the grass is this much higher than the side of the shed now. Or the concrete pad. So all that needs to be taken down in that area anyway, and then, so, we just need to go out and probably just take a look at it, too.
It'll also fix where that water going down into the fuel tank, and not have to pay grims to change it that way.
Three thousand dollars.
So that would be three thousand dollars towards this project, would help the cost of that, too. And then there'll just be one shed cleaned up down there, look nicer.
Yeah, but you have one, you do another shed.
Surplus it or auction it off?
Yeah, surplus it, County Shed, they did something out there. It ought to be worth a thousand bucks.
It all depends what it looks like when you pick it up.
But it's something we can look at down there.
Yeah.
I don't know if a guy wants to put it on next year's budget, or if we're gonna try to do it this year. Do it next year, then we can budget for it, if we do it this year, we'll have to supplement it.
Yeah.
And that's, and that was, I did mention that to Kim after getting all these quotes, and I said, if we change everything out. Say we moved the, did the retaining wall, did the, uh, shed, got all that done. We'd have to also move a sprinkler line, you're probably looking at about ten thousand dollars for the whole thing. But if you look at that, our lawn anymore is going like this, away from the building. We're getting so high that our drainage is going towards the building anymore, not away from it. Some that's, needs to be done along some of that anyway, to get the water running off that concrete pad and stuff the right way, now it's running to the concrete pad. So anyway, we need to take a look at that.
Hey, you might wanna consider the drainage, since the whole line was froze up all winter last year.
Right.
Tank was froze up, 'cause I had water.
Had to bring a little tank in, and then furnace up to.
That was two winters ago, wasn't it?
I think it was just last winter.
Last winter. Yeah, it was last winter.
It was two winters ago. It was really cold, it froze all my water lines in my yard, it was two winters ago.
Okay, you're gonna be deep, Tom.
No, right in the middle of the road there, right at six foot and there, forty feet of it.
It'll do a long road.
Yep, last year wasn't as bad as the year before.
So, yeah, we need to.
So you wanna leave this, you wanna leave this down?
And, so, I guess another question I have on that is, do we, do we wanna put another line item in there for grounds? And start breaking down our sprinkler system and our groundskeeping and stuff like that, so we actually know what sidewalks, that east sidewalk eventually is gonna need to be replaced over here, it's starting to crack. You know, it's, it's getting old, there's, uh, so, I mean, it doesn't matter, you can put it under just for the maintenance and repairs, leave it there, but.
Yeah.
Cause that has levy on it, don't it, twelve thousand a year?
Yeah.
Or something like that.
Yeah, that is, yeah, this is at the general courthouse, but the courthouse building has the levy, this comes out of your general.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna do the sidewalks or something. If you wanna do the sidewalks or something, you could use this building.
But I guess I'd say leave it, 'cause I think we'll try to get that stuff done this year, probably.
Okay, if we do decide to do it.
Right.
Okay.
Don't you guys think, or I mean, it should be done? Right? Yep.
So what was, uh. What was the D O E's record salary?
Well, this one's gonna be way different.
I know it, I, that's what I'm trying to break down, what's her, what's.
I can give you a little sheet of that, man. I made it.
Is this eighty-five thousand, a flipping increase, you know?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
Well, I would look at it just like the auditors, since it's the same, it's got a full-time employee, plus that, would be pretty close to the wage, it'd be fairly close to being that.
What age is the auditor on, man?
I think, wouldn't it?
I don't know.
I mean, I would think so. Right.
Okay, yeah, do it, I can do it. Well, for example, that's real sound, right?
So do you make them all the same, or why are they all a little different? All the salaries should be the same.
It's the same next as the treasurer's office.
Treasurer or the auditors, yep.
Your auditor will, will.
Yeah, I wonder why that would be.
Either, your, 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 your salary is lower than the other two offices that have the F D.
Oh. Carla has a part-time, like, act for some. Carla has a part-time, like, act for some.
Oh, okay. Somebody comes in to help, stuff, helps with stuff every year. That's why it was a little different.
The other office is.
It's gonna be the same as the auditor.
Okay, so this should be seventy-seven for.
Four twenty-four. Right.
Yeah, but she'll have her raise, so it'll be the same.
What's that?
Katrina will have her raise by the first of the year, right?
Yeah, so that would be, that would be about right then.
Right.
Take a budget.
Not no more.
Or yes, she's the other officer.
Debbie still comes down.
Yeah, so that would need to go back to the seventy-seven, four twenty-four for the salary.
On what?
Right.
On the DOE.
And then I'll give it insurance.
And then professional fees, that was Vanguard stuff, I'm assuming. Five thousand dollars, yeah.
All right, cause that's, we still got a big payment left on that probably. We have one payment left or how many payments we got on that?
I don't know. There's one.
I can't either.
Maybe she can tell you. Come on in.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Hi. Good morning.
Morning. I guess, I guess I was kinda curious, how many more years left do we have on those payments for Vanguard? I couldn't remember.
Um, the, the, um, remote one just started and it's usually five years. She got it in eighteen. So we've done three payments, so there should be two payments left on the other stuff. But like your, um, your, what are you gonna call it? Your, some of this stuff technically, for them to do upgrades, to update stuff, do whatever it's like anything else. There's a yearly fee for some of that too that will always be there.
Right.
But some of this is, yes. The payments usually are set up on a five-year plan, so I'm assuming she's made, there's been three payments made.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
Is that part of the consideration why five thousand more on, or not quite five thousand on professional fees?
Nope, professional fees had nothing to do with it. I do mind, well, I guess it would be the way she does her budget. Mine actually reduced four thousand dollars because I'd had money in it, it reduced by four thousand dollars because I had money in there to purchase the training time for them for training Katrina when she started. So for this year now, I've taken that back out, so that reduced it four thousand dollars.
Well, like the professional fees here, you got twenty-two thousand three hundred for now, this year. Why is it four thousand?
Where's this not up, Carla? Where's this seven thousand dollars on here?
Um, professional fees.
I, I guess that's what it's at. Why is that going up? Four thousand dollars is.
Cause the, the different areas, um.
That's what we pay.
I kinda do my budget a little different.
Where do you pay this out?
Oh, you're on my sure deeds.
Money's going and coming from.
Oh, no wonder.
I was like, Moya, your numbers look a lot different than mine.
Four thousand dollars going down.
There we go.
Yeah, the other place really.
That was better.
Yeah.
There's one for each of you.
Gotcha.
Right, because like I said, I have a special one that I do for, um, DOE recertification and conference. That's gonna increase by eighteen hundred dollars because I now have a deputy to send to conference and school and trainings um, to get rooms, meals for, whatever.
That wouldn't be on the professional fee, so would it?
Yeah, that's what they told me.
That's where it is? Okay.
Um, another one would be actually in my professional fees there again. Now I gotta pay her membership or her conference fee and her school fee, which is about eight hundred dollars, eight to nine hundred dollars depending on, you know, usually the classes are either three fifty to four fifty, depending on what kind of instructors you'd need.
And then your annual dues went up that much too, five hundred?
Well, they will because I'm now paying hers too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the travel isn't the same thing as the professional? That's confusing.
We pay most of the, uh, conference fees, I think, on the travel.
Yeah. And there again, it's just, I went, I went through and calculated, if you go to school for five days.
Okay.
School starts at eight o'clock on Monday. On the average, you're gonna leave and get there on Sunday night because depending on where they are, it's hard to get there by Monday morning. So you're gonna be there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So you're gonna have five nights of motels. You're gonna have supper, then I calculate all my meals at what I'm given and calculate all them in. I attempt as hard as I can to make sure I only spend a certain amount on my motel rooms if I can get them that way. Sometimes you can at a cheaper rate or a discount rate. If I can't, sometimes you have to pay a little more. Then you have, say that covers schooling. Then you have conference, which is usually a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, leaving on Friday. Again, depending on where it's at, what time it starts, you're either gonna go Monday night or you can sometimes leave on Tuesday morning, but you're still gonna be there at least three days and, or four days and three nights. Usually coming home on a Friday. So then I calculate in all those motel rooms, all those meals, all those.
How many weeks usually?
School is a week.
One week?
Conference is usually three days, basically.
So two weeks.
And then you have odd and end training. So odd and end training's all in there. Vanguard usually has a two-day training, um.
And that's all in professional fees and not travel? Is that what you're saying?
I put it in travel, but.
You filled this out, is that right?
Yep. So most of that should be in this travel, yeah.
The four thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, the twenty-two thousand is was just for your.
The twenty-two, three is for everything else that I calculate in that isn't here, that I calculate into, is usually, yes.
Looks like it's been almost twenty-one thousand last year. Almost.
Twenty thousand seven thirty, three point two-nine. But then again, you, then you have to kinda, again, break it down to what's going in there and what's not. Um, there again, I, let's see, yeah.
So is the same just by the increase?
Because my travel also includes my gas, my, my gas to get there. Sometimes it, like I said, by the time you add the motel rooms, the meals.
Well, yeah, four thousand will seem like a sidebar out of the line.
And there again, that's just a guesstimation because, and there again, like this year, everything got canceled. So is, they have a few things now. Is there gonna be something next year to help us make up for what we lost out on?
Where do you travel to for Vanguard?
We usually go to Oklahoma.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's, that's where the, the schooling for Vanguard, I suppose, when she's come down helps for a lot of that. Seventeen thousand that's come from this year is twenty thousand?
I, I spent, which I had in my budget, sixty-five hundred dollars this year, went into training time for Vanguard for them to come down because Tony had already used the eighty hours she had. So I purchased more hours for them to have time to help Katrina work on Vanguard and kinda learn the program.
Okay. See.
And there again, I, so that training time is under my professional fees. Um, I believe my Vanguard software stuff is under those professional fees.
Right, and that's seven thousand dollars.
Yeah. And then like my computer software, my GIS annual fees for that, my district three planning, um, that runs into about twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, I believe that is under that professional fee also. And there again, there's gonna be a lot of changes there because we just got our new soil maps. They have to be implemented. Well, we have a choice. We can either implement them or we cannot till next year. But it's gonna cost me between fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars to have GIS put them into my map. And then you have all the other stuff to come with it. Um, Department of Revenue is telling people they have the right. If they don't have a smartphone or a computer to access it, they all get to come to my office to do it. There again, COVID nineteen, why should I let all these people on my computer? So now I'm looking at the possibility that I'm gonna have to get, purchase another computer to put in my office, which I planned on changing out Katrina's next year because hers is getting up there. But what computer do I have, you know? Do I let everybody on my computer? I have a guy that, you know, is looking at doing the appeal right now for his plan. Um, it could take him most of the day that my computer's gonna be tied up for him to get the appeal.
No, if we have to have a public computer, we'll have a computer.
It's gotta be by my office so I can assist them, but yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, that would be, we would have it there. I mean, we wouldn't be putting them on your guys' computer. We'd have.
Well, that, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's no different, which they argued the point too. I discussed, um, there's a soil survey that they want us to be able to put either on a smartphone or on a tablet, which you have to have internet to make it work out in the country. Do everybody's objection to their ag land. I'm not putting it on my personal phone.
Right.
So then what do you do? So now you're looking at either a cell phone or some kind of internet for our tablet to run these programs that will assist with the.
I thought we were gonna get something that you could do that out in the field with anyway. I don't know, we already.
Your tablet.
Tablet.
I have my tablet, but how do you have internet access out in the middle of Milesville? I didn't know a tablet could roam, I guess.
You can have it connect to your phone, but not your phone.
Connecting it to my phone.
Right. But a hotspot.
Yeah.
And we can get a hotspot that she could take out with her, which would be just a.
Do you think we could, our election has four hotspots?
Yeah.
So like I said, yeah, there's a, that's what I told them.
Cause the tablet could download that and if you had a hotspot, you could connect it, so it's.
But the eight classifications or reasons they're giving us for adjustment, this guy figures it will take me a year just to do his place. Eighty-six hundred acres. Plus trying to reassess, finish up Midland, do the eleven, um, townships that I plan to do this year. Now I gotta stop.
I thought you were done with Midland.
I still have to recheck everything within my computer.
Oh.
I mean, we went over there, we entered stuff and whatever.
Oh, okay, that's what you meant by being done with it the other day when you told me you're done with it. Okay.
Yep. And then I had eleven townships that I wanna get to, but like I said, in the, if, when he files his appeal, which he's supposed to come in today to do, you can only do it on seamless documents online. You can't print them, you can't look at them. And if you sign up for their seamless documents, then it costs you two hundred and fifty dollars a year to be able to go back and look at anything you previously filed.
For each one?
For each county.
So like for two hundred and fifty dollars, you can go look at anything in the county though?
Yep.
Not just that guy's stuff?
Right, anybody, any seamless document that you file.
Yeah.
But it costs, you'd have to pay their subscription fee to be able to go do it because you cannot print anything. So if he comes in and he does seven pages of assessment notices, parcels, that, then it all gets sent to the state. Then they send me an email, non-printable, saying he appealed. And then I have to remember or take screenshots of everything he appealed, every parcel, when I go out to the field to do it. So I know exactly why he appealed every parcel. Because they won't allow them to be printed.
They don't want paper trail.
Yeah.
So I mean, we're even, I mean, you're even supposed to, we're supposed to be measuring the slopes. And they told us at the meeting the other day, Hocking County is the worst county, gonna have the most changes in their soil as anybody in the state. Cause their soil.
Especially because of your slopes too.
Yep.
Sandy on top. Real good every bottom.
But yeah, we have to measure every one of those if they ask us to.
Stuff that should be crass.
Yeah. Well, they, their theory is nothing, nothing western Missouri.
The weather river should have ever been farmed. Yep.
Period. Oh, yeah.
So unfortunately, yeah, I've seen there's a lot more things that could be, and that's what I did. They said, well, you should let us talk to people. And I said, no. I said, I just want them to be aware that this is all coming. It could take a person, like I said, a person alone just to do all these. Cause now when he appeals, his has to be done and ready for the assessment notice in, when I sent him in March, his has to be completely done. September first is the end of the filing dates, but you have to be able to go look at that land before the snow flies, before the frost comes. So you can see the grass and you see what's growing, you can see what's.
So what do you do if ten people do it?
Good luck. You go to everybody's place.
So specifically, what are you gonna do looking at it? And the big soil samples?
They want us to. Yes, we're supposed to be taking, yeah. Take our shovel and dig down and see if the top soil was ever disturbed. Yeah, we're supposed to be doing all that too.
Soil scientist.
You think that should come through the soil, soil people?
Well, they just pretty much already said it in RCS. Some of the guys that did this looked out the window, oh, this looks like that other, let's just write it down. They said they're somewhere between seventy and eighty percent accurate, so we have a thirty percent window that we can do adjustments. So the reason we have to look at it is if you're a rancher choosing not to farm it and it says that it's cropped land, then we have to decide, is there something there that stops it from being cropped land? Or is it just the fact that you don't wanna crop it? If you have rocks, if you have a hill, if you have a gate that the tractor can get through, but not the combine, we have to give you an adjustment. And then we have to determine what that adjustment's gonna be up to thirty percent. And then are you gonna just adjust his soil? Or are you gonna adjust it county-wide to keep it fair and equal? Because he's the only one that applied because his neighbor didn't get in quick enough because he didn't. And then again, once they apply, they will only send these to the landowners on their computers. If they don't have the computers, then they don't get to apply it, yes.
So is this all up to you or do you feather your findings farther up, whether to us or to your, you know, somewhere in the state? How does that work?
It's up to us to set our own protocol. Yep. So there, there's a training in, I don't know, August or something on soil stuff, but I ain't gonna go because I wasn't hired to be a soil scientist.
Well, that's what I say is that really should come through your soil district people. That's where you should get your information from. It didn't have to come from you. It should come from them.
So there is, the one guy that was at this last meeting when they did it said basically, NRCS is willing to help out if they can. So when I go do this guy's eighty-six hundred acres, I'm gonna request that they come along and do their soil sampling. In case he was one of those places where they just opened the door and took a picture out the window and called it good. Cause they said the class fours would be the worst and he said that's pretty much what his whole place is.
What, what part of the county?
Um, the north, north, northeastern. Yep. There's a west, I'm sorry. Gotta get my thing right here.
North.
Well, I know, but I'm just, yeah. Anyway, the northwest part of the county.
Does it anymore?
And I did, listening to. And I did, listening to you guys, there is a thing here that says, as department heads, we do do our own budgets. So that was one of your questions, I think, is why everybody did their own budgets while states right here were supposed to. And then the auditors look over and you guys look over and tell us we're wacko, but. And as far as my, um, wages, I just calculated in the raises that had been kinda annual and calculated in the, my new secretary or new deputy and stuff like that, so. Anyway. And then my supplies, the, the, one of the increases in it was for the, um, rather than buying envelope stamps, whatever, that's the cost of my pre-sort mailing guide. So it really didn't change a lot there.
So like in your, you're gonna need another computer then, or no?
Well, I have a guy coming in today already to start working on mine if that file is appealed. I mean, yeah, if you have five, six people lined up, then at this point, I don't see, somebody said, well, we, you could always, there again, use the tablet, but how many people are gonna say, hey, I can't see nothing? And what happens when you have the tablet out in the field? And they want to, you know, if you're out in the field with it. But there again, it's still how many people touching that tablet?
Yeah.
That you have to do.
Like you said, you were looking at putting a new one in there for Katrina anyway, so we'd have a spare computer.
You're right, and if, if I did a new one for her, I would just use the one she currently has, yep. I wasn't looking at budgeting hers until next year, but because of this.
And this year, if there's no traveling, you probably take the computer out of traveling this year. Or somewhere, have something else that's in there. If that's what we're talking about.
Well, she'll have some travel because she'll still have to go to school to finish her.
Christie, or Katrina will still go to school in October, yep, yep.
So there will be some travel, I think.
Right.
And I did, I got her, you know, there again, good rates on the room, whatever, so.
Right, there's three thousand dollars for.
Right.
So like if you take the, like when you go to the country, then you take the drangle?
Yes.
And then when you get back, you fill it up again, so you will.
And I usually, and I try really hard. I, I had a good system in Kidoka, I just had a trouble here getting it going cause it's far and in between, but I always took it. And when I got back, I filled it and then I kept track of my mileage and then I kept track of where I was within the county. So if I was doing the town of Midland, town of Phillip, if I was, um, Milesville area, if I was over by Midland, I always kept track of where I was at, so I knew where my mileage was at. But I, and there again, my gas and whatever is calculated, kinda based off of what I did over there. How many miles I would put in a year over there times so much, I don't know, I think I figured three fifty gallon or, I don't know, three something gallon. And that's kinda where I come up with my mileage. That I was requested. There again, it probably ain't gonna be the same. There are a few more things coming up, but if I, the, some of the townships I wanna do are, you know, put it up in this corner, put it over in that corner, a few in the middle and a few right out here, but.
Everything's as enough as it is? The wage is over there?
Yep. I think so.
Do you, uh, do we have someplace we could get the money for a computer now?
The only thing is, you're looking there, Nick, but.
Right.
Okay. Um, Vanguard, we paid them for entering those properties that come out of this year's budget instead of last year's budget, as far as I understand.
Yep.
Um, the other thing was, I do have some money that was supposed to go to, um, Harry for working on nine-one-one addressing. There again, maybe that money can go towards trying to do this instead. You know, get my GIS set up for this. Um, there was, oh, then I did, I bought the remote and the tablet. For, there again, it should be able to come out of the COVID money, you know, the, the grants that you're supposed to be able to get for COVID. Cause it would utilize working from home and such, but.
Question two, uh, the GPS didn't work outside of town or something. Uh, it's erratic now, but every now and then they hit the right address when they come to me. Did that give alter, do you know?
Um, the only way to, you know, Teresa O'Connell asked the same question. The answer to her is, as far as like the Google type maps that drives your, um, GPS, you have to personally call them and get it changed. That's not.
Not me?
Yeah. You have to call them and say, this is my address in order to get them to pay you.
Because it's Google's system.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So.
Back to your grants and you've applied for those?
The county applies for them. So basically, any, any expenses or costs the county has for COVID, they're supposed to apply for them. So it would reverse everybody who.
They can't be pre-budget, or like, can't be pre-approved though. Like you guys approved it before COVID started.
Not my tablet. Cause I asked, I, I asked back in February about getting it and they said no, and then a month later, they approved it. And I asked them for the thing of working from home from COVID.
I'll go get that.
Yeah.
Cause we talked to David Reason, he said it went to apply to.
But anyway, regardless, well, it won't, it's.
But there again, it's something that came out of my budget I hadn't budgeted for or planned for, which, so some of that travel money was maybe re-designated there.
Already?
So.
But I, I guess, I think we need to look at updating that computer anyway, because she's had a lot of issues with just staying on the internet and things like that, so. And that, if we're gonna have to have people coming in and utilizing the computer, we don't want them utilizing your computers or tying up your computer time. When you're, when you're in the office, you should be able to work on your computer, your stuff. And, uh, I think we need to look at, maybe expedite that. So do we need to address it or does it just come out of the budget? That's what I was asking, what, if she had to, yeah.
Want to, like supplies, for instance? Where would come out of? No, we're, cause we're talking about last year.
Technically, professional fees or.
Well, I mean, to get a new computer.
Well, not wait until next year to do it though.
Right.
Not, six months down the road, I don't think it's gonna do us any good if you got people coming in all the time doing that.
Yeah, we ponder, think about it, look at it, you know, and then.
But.
We got a meeting in a week, so. We discuss the current budget next week and the, next year's budget today.
Thanks, Rowan.
Cause you just have it, you know, you should probably, probably.
Well, yeah, and we didn't budget for a full-time person, so.
That deal sounds to me like it's just gonna get worse and worse.
Yeah.
For the amount of crap we're gonna have to do. And the whole deal is they're trying to take your, the control away from the county and give it to the state. For the taxes.
We're leaving the bottom of this one up.
Okay.
Any changes on this one besides the wages?
Just wages. Registered deeds, other than putting the salary back, I, they're pretty much the same.
Yep. Looks like it. What was the salary adjusted to, if we figured it out?
Uh, would be the same as.
It would be exactly eight, eight, no, eighteen. Yeah. The vet service must be just.
I think he added fifty dollars to every, that's what he wanted.
Yeah, it's about four hundred and twenty-four dollars altogether that he added to the whole thing.
He never expense that one.
Yeah.
Did she not, just going back to the registered deeds, the wages not increase, the reassurance?
Guess the only thing.
Oh, adjust that in the deed.
Okay.
That would be the only thing that changed the salary.
She didn't adjust it at all.
Leave the vet service?
This is what?
Leave the vet service?
Yeah.
Wages back to.
Yeah. And I did a eight percent increase on the predatory animal control. Did we get a letter that said we were gonna?
We did check and make sure it's been right, but. It did go up a little bit.
Must be an increase in cattle in Hocking County, yeah.
I think the cattle went up and the sheep went down. One went up.
Oh, yes, yeah. I'm sure that's what it was, or would be. I haven't heard anybody go into sheep business.
Good to see them. Except, except for Daniel.
So Steve, did anybody contact Glenn to see if you had any idea what insurance may go up? He's, don't have a clue.
Isn't it in the hole?
They won't know till October.
Well, just a guess till October.
It'll be too late, Mike. It'll be too late for this one.
No. Was what it take last year, twenty-six?
I think twenty-four.
Hopefully don't do that again.
This one can be like six percent, won't seem really good though.
Oh, yeah.
The year before it went down, it was, it was pretty unusual.
It was pretty good for a couple of years.
And actually, Rusty Benefits requested to give us a quote and they called back, um, Thursday and said, what do you got? Cause you're doing it. They won't even quote us. Same with the pool thing that we did last year, so.
They wouldn't even touch that?
No.
Oh.
Was that the, whatever pool you had us check last year too, and it was the same?
Yep. Nope, it didn't. Will stay the same.
I guess. Plus he comes back in.
The sheriff's?
I'll have to make sure that that's right with the secretary. But I'm pretty sure, but. But I'll make sure anyway.
Yeah, did they have an updated one here somewhere?
Uh, the first one is the updated one. The first one that you come to is the updated one? No.
I was thinking this pile right in New York. It might be off.
Maybe it's in.
That's up there. I'm looking for the sheriff to fill it out, ready?
I'll give you a copy.
I'm just missing mine again.
No, I don't have any of it.
This one?
You got one too?
Yep, he's got one too. It's right on the top of your pile in Magada. It wasn't stapled here. It was on this one, a month ago, on Magada.
Oh.
It wasn't stapled here.
Same, this same here?
And then like, seven, seven. How's the, yeah.
All right, but I know where it's at.
The cattle.
It's a ninety thousand.
What does that do?
Really have a change?
That down a little bit.
Does that change a little bit each year?
It lasts for, I think it's, it's five years, every five years.
They get it off the N A S T.
And there is a site, you can go on, because that's what I did this year, because I just get a letter and I thought it was supposed to change this year. And I went on and compared and it was still the same for this year, cause then next year it changed.
All right, I got the numbers, nobody else?
I made copies, I think it's.
On mine. Oh, I know.
Because.
Yeah.
I have copies, yeah.
Carla. That's why.
Forget it.
We don't give all away, Carla.
Uh, yeah, well, did you want me, are we gonna change the patch?
Would you wanna change the patch?
Oh, yes, uh, adjusted up to where you had it, probably, yeah.
Sixty-something. Sixty, sixty-three.
Oh, sixty-three ninety-five.
That's increased between nineteen and twenty.
You want me to move it back down then, or that? You want me to move it back down then?
Two.
To the fifty-nine nineteen.
No, it should be at the new, new one, whatever the new one is. Okay, yeah, move it to that.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't think it'll be increasing, oh, okay. It shouldn't go up for the next five years.
Yeah, on the letter, it says, beginning of April.
Yeah.
Fifty-nine eighteen seventy-two, so fifty-nine nineteen.
Yeah, we just got that one.
Yeah.
I'll change it to the fifty-nine nineteen then.
Yeah, it only changes with, uh, N A S T statistics, they only do those every five years. I guess I should figure, you know, if they have an increase.
What's that?
Oh, I was just looking at the insurance. Is that a, figured out twenty percent?
Well, that'll change because the, we'll be out of that now, it wasn't before.
Okay.
I think the wages, I think. Are pretty, wasn't that right? The twenty-twenty-one?
This one says one nineteen, this one says one oh eight that requested.
So would it have?
That's with no raises, that was just figured, right?
This is no raise, so these numbers are right.
Okay. They all match.
The one nineteen is right.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Right.
This, the twenty-twenty-three budgeted numbers are. This, the twenty-twenty-three budgeted numbers are right.
So would the insurance?
Oh, the one-oh-four twelve?
Yep.
Is right, okay.
Do you see it?
Yep, yep, I see, yep.
Yeah.
That was with the numbers that was changing here. Okay. Leave it.
So would half of her insurance come out of, would this be half of her insurance?
Yes, the half come out of it, that's the register deeds.
Yep, and then Tim and Fred's.
Yep, and then Tim and Fred's.
Yeah. We're all fixed, all goes on there. Any changes on the bottom of that one?
The lab fees goes up a thousand, so there's where that goes.
Yep.
Yeah, I think if you go to the next page, I added one of the sheets where, yeah, Amanda did put that in.
Yeah, it's on the new one that we...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yep, I see it, yep.
And then I just re-copied all the numbers that she had written down, yeah.
Yep, it's right here.
This the same as this? One that you gave us the last month?
Nope, this one has the new, or we moved the lab fees over.
Oh, the membership?
Yeah.
Lab fees, okay. So instead of thirty-nine, that'd be forty-nine?
Yeah.
Yep.
How come it's not forty-nine?
Forty.
Oh, thirty-nine plus a thousand.
It was thirty-nine.
Okay, yep.
There it is, good.
Twelve thousand, what we've been putting in this capital outlay.
Bird card, yeah.
That's a different.
Well, that was different?
This is, yeah, ten thousand that we put into capital outlay, doesn't show up on here.
I see.
Because that's a separate thing, that's done by the...
That's what you've been giving them for like the equipment that they've been getting for the pipeline and stuff. Like we use the, to buy the bus and stuff.
So what'd you buy in twenty-eighteen for seventy-five thousand dollars?
Well, that would've been the pickup.
Yeah, the pickup.
So then you moved the capital outlay over.
You would've supplemented the budget from the capital outlay.
Okay.
And then you'd leave the money from capital outlay account into your general account.
There's mud, yeah. One time to keep track of all that, isn't it?
The paper trail gets hard to follow after.
And then the jail, I left the same, I guess. Plus, I'm out of the other.
No.
Jail, same.
Yeah, hardly is there.
That's another one, used to be like two thousand dollars.
Yeah. Money left over. Around the margin for so far this year, though. We're doing that terrible bad.
Even the coroner.
That's only, that's only four months.
I know, but it's about on target for, for the year.
Thirty-six. Forty, forty thousand. Four thousand.
Yeah.
Times that thing's four.
Um, the coroner, I left the same.
Four months for a third of the way.
Forty-four thousand.
For a third of the way, for a third of the year. It's only four months in a year, so.
Right.
We're in four, we're in four, so.
Barely, yeah.
So we could be on track.
The last two years I've been here.
And it could change, I mean. You need it all.
Yeah.
Right.
Might change by the end of the year pretty fast, I'll bet.
So I left that one.
Yeah, twenty-eighteen, a hundred dollars.
Yeah, we usually never have anything, and then the last two years are like random. And then how early, so I left the same. So Portogapoor, I moved down because we haven't really been using much, I guess.
What number are you?
We're on twenty-four.
See, Carla really loved the, uh... I had three things in there about Fred. Oh, okay. Oh. Here we go.
I moved it down a little bit just because we haven't been using it.
Yeah.
So, there, not too long.
What's the other one that's just way back on the line of mental health?
Yeah, that one's been pretty rough.
Where is that?
Let's get there.
Where'd it be? I figured they'd be wrecking, I need to... It's after twenty-four.
It's after twenty-four.
And then all you...
Twenty-five, so we got...
Oh, mentally you all good.
So, are you good with lowering the support before?
I think so. I know we have some better ones on there, puberty's back farther.
What can county health all change the wages?
Everything else looks about kosher.
Yeah, they have changed.
What are you just back with?
Mentally, you only left the same at eight thousand, but as you can see, it's...
Now we're on twenty-seven. Twenty-seven.
Hope we have any, had any notifications lately of anything else coming up, so maybe it'll be there.
If that's four months, that's through to the year. Red on base.
Yeah, so I left that one. The library, I'll adjust it. And then I guess the only other thing is the Midland Library, they flooded, so their insurance was higher this year. So we had to raise it, that's the second one, the fourteen thirty-four, that's why that's the...
Library supplies went up two thousand?
Didn't they say they wanted to put a new furnace in? In there?
That's what they, that might be in their suppliers, I don't know.
That should be under...
We don't pay, or...
You don't pay for the building?
For Midland, other than the insurance.
This is salary and insurance.
This is just fill up.
That's just the insurance.
I don't know why it'd decrease then.
Unless she thought that the city wanted, because she gets some money from the city too, so I don't know for that.
I thought she came to us and asked for, to help us pay for part of the heating and then, when it flooded. I thought she came and asked for, if the best, if the city would kick in something, we would, so.
Oh, the Midland Library?
Yeah, I remember her coming there. Correct, she sent a letter or something. Where was that last year, Carla?
I don't recall.
It was had to do with the flooding in the basement.
I think Mike's going down to ask her.
Oh, I did one.
But then I read.
I don't remember the math or anything more.
I don't either.
I, I can't, for you to, you can't remember.
I don't remember anything, but I know they got a letter from the state regarding the hours that they're open.
Yeah.
Their question.
Right. That's what she was saying earlier.
The lady downstairs wouldn't know?
No.
Anything from the Midland?
Not from the Midland.
So the library utilities, is that what the, is that for Midland?
Um, no, she gets money from the city, and then we deposited into our general fund and then pay about...
This supply is just the fill-up.
So that's not actually our money. It's being set, but we have to budget to spend it.
Nine thousand?
We stopped them with the money for the homeless city.
I don't know. Chair up a few.
Hey, sir.
Like last year, they got twenty-five fifty for the city.
Hey, we like part one two, we think part one two.
I don't, that's the spreadsheet we're on now is yours.
Okay. So did you guys have some questions for me?
Yeah, on the supplies that went up to nine thousand dollars, we're just kinda curious what the jump was or what the plans were.
Okay, so the supply budget is sort of our catch-all for everything, and that includes any purchase of new books, outside of any grant money that we get. So a lot of the grant money that I've seen come in so far since I've been here is for programming and whatnot. Um, so then any books that were purchased, that comes out of the supply budget. And I, I will say this, this was sort of difficult for me, coming in not only new, but also in the middle of everything with COVID and us not being able to travel, and us not having training and different things. And so our numbers are definitely off and different right now. And so this was me sort of sitting down and trying to see, okay, where have we been and where are we right now? And what, um, are we looking at going forward? So, um, that amount was chosen based off of me looking at where is money being spent? And how is it being spent? And what does the library need? And so when I put that amount down, that was with the intent of money, more money to go towards, um, books and available items in the library for patrons. So that is my, my thought process when I was putting that together.
No, my, my concern is your budget in previous years, they've been from three to five thousand, and, and you're almost doubling that.
And I was, when I was creating the budget for twenty-one, I was going off of twenty-twenty, and I see what you are saying. And question for Carla and Amanda, is the, when the money comes in for grants, then that goes, like, is that part of, like...
No.
Okay.
And that's what I told them, maybe you thought that that was a request thing, and it, we accept the money and then supplement your budget to add it to after.
Okay.
Because you don't budget for grant money because you don't know what is available, or if you'll receive anything. So you just budget what you want to have the county support, and then the grant would be, like you said, supplemented into your account if you receive it.
Okay.
And I guess at one of our meetings, I did tell her that we were coming up with the budget, and her being new is to go ahead and put the extra in there because, or whatever she thought, because she doesn't really know, uh, from having prior history, so, uh, it's always better to ask for a little more, get a little less than it is to get a little less, get a little less more.
I will be, you know, as I'm putting this together, I wanted to be conservative and mindful, you know, as I'm putting together this budget and being new, and as I said, with COVID and everything, this was difficult because I'm trying to anticipate needs that I don't understand and I don't know. Um, and so this is, you know, whatever money is allocated for the library, I can guarantee you that it'll be used wisely and for the patrons and for the community. But I also understand that you all have a lot of responsibility yourselves for how money is used within the community. So whatever decision you make, then that will be honored within the library, and the funds allocated there will be used as wisely as possible.
The two thousand for library equipment, what do you got in mind there?
So with the computers that we have in the library, they rotate out, and I actually had spoke to Ron about what all he has done and helped with with the library. And, um, so that would be to go towards the upkeep and renewal of those computers, because they're sort of on a rotating basis where we rotate one out each year, to my understanding.
I think there's five down there, right?
Um, so there's, uh, four open to the public, and then there is the one that is my, at my desk, and then there is a laptop that we are using to check books in and out when we enter the library, and then also for mobile use, like when we had our event on the lawn, um, here last week for the kids, and I was able to check books out for them there in that way, so.
Just kind of off the subject, how many did you have come to that?
Um, we ended up, um, with twenty-five kids that, there was five that were unable to come, but we still put together the packets for them and everything. So I thought that that was a really great turnout, especially considering, I believe it was twenty-eight total that had signed up for the summer reading program, so to have that many kiddos, um, come on over and check out books, and me be able to have some face time with them and contact with them.
Good. Any other questions?
No.
On your final budget, like the last few years is around forty thousand, and you're at fifty-two thousand. So you're asking for a twelve thousand dollar increase, eleven thousand in your budget?
The wages will be definitely down.
Understand that.
And then the library Midland entrance was...
Where's that show up?
That's on the fourteen thirty-four, on the second one. It's usually been eight hundred, but since the flood, we, um...
So that's...
We wrote a check for what it was this year, and it made it over budget.
Well, that's the budget for this year, it was fifty-two thousand.
Yeah.
So this, what's this end up? Not total.
Well, she looks like she just has, we just pay the insurance for Midland, right? Liability?
The wages for the library.
Wages for the library. So there's two, there's two, two items that are...
Have you totaled that up, please?
Yep.
So you'd have to set Midland Library, appearance of Midland Library salaries.
Yeah, the salary is on a separate line because they each have to do their own annual reports, so it's easier for us to track it when it's listed.
I mean, I guess my thoughts, like, put that back to five thousand, I mean, for the past years on that nine thousand dollar one? And try that, or what's yours, guys, thoughts?
Or even six, I mean, six would be an increase over what they've been doing, but...
Right, well, it went down from seventeen down to twenty-nine hundred and nineteen, five thousand out of...
Where's that? Yeah.
You know, five thousand would be kind of a good, you know, went up to seven thousand dollars, but I don't... Just seems like it'll be picking on somebody here, at least.
Well, and as you can see, the travel and the training and those things all stayed the same, because...
Right.
Currently, I can't travel or do any of that.
Right.
Um, and I tried to leave, like, even like our professional fees and whatnot, as close to, and like our annual dues and memberships, all just as close to the same as possible, um, so.
Yeah, I would, I would say if nothing else, at least no increase on the supplies.
If you left the wages the same and left her requests like they are, then you'd be at fifty-five, five twenty.
Fifty-five, five twenty?
Yeah. Which is a three thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollar difference, taking into account the Midland Library. So like, twenty-five hundred.
So like their capital outlay, that's, that's actually, their library equipment goes down to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's one of those things that just, everything just keeps growing, growing.
That's the only change I would, I recommend is take that one back a couple thousand.
Those supplies? Back to the seven thousand fifty or?
I think five thousand, but that's, maybe that's undercutting it, but I don't know.
So they use twenty-six sixty so far, right? This year?
So far this year, yeah.
So three thousand.
So that would be close to seven at the end of the year, wouldn't it? Something adding that, right?
Yeah. But I don't remember what she had set up, if she was having some extra in there for just this year, you know, there's some stuff that she had planned or, I don't remember. I mean, you know, cause budgets.
I think Sarah's doing most of the same programming and not more than.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to find.
Right.
But yeah, as far as what Missy had planned, whenever she prepared the budget last year.
Right.
I don't have any idea.
Right.
So that's where some of this was me trying to make the best guess that I could off of the facts that I do know.
Right.
Well, I'd say leave it at the seven, uh, like, say that's about where she's at now on her expenditures, right?
Close.
I mean, if you're gonna get any books or anything like that.
Do you have room for them all?
We do, yes.
My wife.
Do you have the ones that are not usable?
So there is a criteria for reading books um that are outlined and then a lot of those go, are either donated or go like on our annual book sale, which normally would be during festival days, it's going to be in August this year, and then those funds go back into the library and it's a really great event for people in the community as well.
That would be my only suggestion is to take that one back to seven thousand or whatever. To her. Whatever magic.
Seven thousand even or seven fifty, seven thousand fifty?
I don't know why I'm saying. Yeah, what it, what it was for last year. For five, whatever.
I just know it sucks to cut things later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
Let's go with that for now and see where we're at.
Okay. I'm sure you can spend it, that's not a problem, I know my wife can spend every nickel on the checkbook, but, but you know what it is.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'd be tough one, being new, we could put on the spot right away.
Oh, I see what she did, she just, there's three months gone, she just took it times three, figured out where it was at. I'm kinda guessing like a lot of these numbers where, all these numbers come up first parts of the years for your dues and all that stuff, so that's where all the money comes from. The, the second half of the year, probably don't spend any, which, but if it's there, it can be spent and that just drives me nuts.
For the county fair, um, I don't know if any of you've noticed, but the round building shingles are extremely bad, so that would have been the only thing that we talked with Cheryl about.
You want me to maybe get Moses to come down and do a bid on the shingles for that? It's miserable, so.
She said it's hard to find somebody to do it.
That ain't very long ago, they did that.
Oh.
Has it been ten years even?
It must have been longer than that, I don't remember it.
Ain't been very long since they reached shingle the damn thing.
I don't remember.
I have a clue.
Ever reached shingle, I thought John was going to, but I didn't think he ever got it down.
I thought she would pull it out for some bids and see what we come up with.
She said it's hard to find somebody to do it because of it's wrong.
Joshua Williams was living out home, I see him around, like, he reached shingle for me, so.
That's right, correct?
Yeah.
Joshua was wrong.
Okay. So do you just wanna leave it at the twenty-eight hundred for now?
What do they use, they use, we've been giving them two thousand for the fair.
I don't have any idea what it would cost to shingle. I don't know if that would work, but there's still some money in there this year, you can partial pay.
She talked about at some point in time if they could do it too, putting up the main floor in the building. I don't know, you know, what that would cost, but that was one of the things she.
Yeah. There's a chance some people that trip when they go in, cause you have to step up over the ledge up here.
The sill.
Yeah, and that's pretty.
Dirt floor.
Yeah.
It's not very handy, I mean, it's a, it's a nice, unique building, whether or not.
Right.
It might be something to look at and not use anymore. You know, I, I don't know.
I don't know if they really use it.
They use it during the fair.
But, but I'm not sure they should be.
Well, yeah, yeah.
You know, if your, if your sill sticks up that high.
That's where she has.
And those old people trying to step over that, go in there and get a glass of tea and, or young kids, either one. Cause it does, it's just a, like a four by four sill, it sticks up probably, I'd say six, seven inches.
Gonna step over it back down anyway, yeah.
That don't work the best for lunch either, cause you, and you're walking in that sand stirring up dust continuing, so, but it's worth. Cute little green right one. Is, is that four H building, is that county too, or is that four Hs? That's, that's a four H building, I know that. Just don't count it, probably.
Yeah.
I have no idea though. I remember, I sold it to the county for a buck or something, just like the shit. So I don't know, we've used insurance on it. We don't do it. Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised, that's out, so. I guess uh, that was my, one of my questions I had, if we're paying insurance on it, I see there's quite a few vehicles being parked out there under it during hail season.
Not really.
Yeah, so I wonder if that would be our liability if that, say, windstorm come through and knocked it down on somebody's vehicle.
It's gonna hail, so.
I don't know. You're a person.
I present information to the board, I don't need you to talk to you guys.
I don't know. I just guess the last time I came into town, when that storm went throughout it eats last week, I'd seen about four or five vehicles parked out there, so I was just kinda wondering if that would be our liability or.
I know Cheryl and Jesse were mowing out there and the vehicles that parked there that, if they kicked up a rock, went through windshield, would that be accounting?
Probably.
Do I need to get business shingles and the floor or just shingles?
Or tin.
Yeah, we talked about.
Yeah, we need to have tin, but I don't know.
I don't know how you.
It would be happy.
I'm sure the shingles are a lot of waste too, but.
Right.
Maybe you get up there top and.
Right.
Think so.
You could use your pieces.
Be a lot of waste, so. Guess I ain't in here doing it, no.
Just wanna leave it at twenty-eight hundred for now and figure out what we're doing. And the extension, I know um Casey has to have a raise or thing through the state, right? We got the letter and let's.
It went up. I was hoping it, cause she filled this out before we got the letters.
Right.
And I don't think it was quite enough.
No, not quite. But the state will make us pay more or, or Estes. December thirty-first.
She done this year?
I think they're planning on advertising.
On what?
Advertising for someone. I guess that would be the schedule. Are you gonna recess or?
Want to.
Maybe, Carla's looking for her paper and I was getting it down.
Take a break, do a bathroom. And call recess.
All right.
I go down in the bathroom.
Bathroom or back room?
Back. It could have been, you never know.
I got bathroom, I was like, dude, why it's so cold?
Yeah, no. I was going through the election stuff and I just picked up some papers and went, turned around, lay them on the counter and the election voting machines are there in those cases and I've got the handles and I very carefully, you know, tucked them behind, but I walked loose and one in that fell down, fell down my foot and I didn't see it, I just swung my foot around to turn and I just went down and off, hands and feet, and lucky I didn't break both arms, I guess.
That would be awkward.
Jimmy Van Tassel, he did that, that's what I was thinking, cause he was.
Yeah, he did, Jimmy Van Tassel.
He was like this for a long time.
Motorcycle friend.
Yeah.
Hit a cow trail.
Jimmy.
Little mini bike, tires that big.
Jimmy Van Tassel?
I thought he was riding my kid down.
That's a long time ago, right?
Hit a cow trail.
Okay, I could remember who he is, I think he ran into somebody.
I remember it, when he hurt.
Okay, the extension salary actually will be ten thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. What Casey got.
How much?
Ten thousand, three hundred and ten, she filled us in with thirteen because she didn't know at the time how much it was going to be. If you can put it back to that, you know, too.
So that makes that other number about twenty-five thousand days on her. Is that right?
You would add three hundred and ten dollars to what it was.
Yep, okay, that's, that's pretty close.
You want me to lower the? I'll have to adjust Cheryl's back down and then just put Casey's show on her test.
Can you help remind me what is it, the, the state pays half, we pay half? I think so, we pay ten thousand and then Jackson County pays ten thousand. Their total salary is thirty-five thousand roughly.
Okay.
Salary and benefits, thirty-four, nine, twenty-two.
So they pay about fourteen thousand roughly, state?
Did you get a copy of this?
I only made two for you.
I didn't see it, I guess. I think it's split wages three ways and then they pay all the sal, the benefits.
Okay.
Be my guess.
Yeah.
The ten thousand, three ten is fucking county, Jackson County.
That's what it looks like.
Each of them pay that much.
Yeah.
Then their insurance is paid by? Each county too?
We just pay the ten thousand.
State pays the benefits.
I'm sure state insurance.
Okay.
Casey is here today, if you or I talk to her about getting a new person in there. Turn it off.
Do you wanna talk to her?
The budget's gonna stay the same anyway, I would imagine, or somewhere in there.
Oh, I'm good.
Sarah leaving?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
When is she leaving? In a year?
Slow concentration, we can't change that, we've always paid that that way, right?
What, what do they do?
Send us a letter and ask us for something. Send us a letter and ask for seventy-two hundred dollars.
Tree plant and all that stuff, oh, okay.
Adjust the wages well.
That was Carla, is he retiring too?
Are you talking about it, I don't know.
She said something about.
Figure it out later, if he is or.
Like everybody's retiring.
Here, this next chair.
Yeah, you're retiring.
I know, I know, that's why I'm including myself.
Where's Steve back today?
Something came up, he was gonna be here. Something came up, I don't know, what he told me. He said something about there was a free feed up at the sail bar, he was gonna try to hit that and then he had this meeting, but he didn't hear it out.
Oh, maybe probably their anniversary sale.
Yeah, I think so.
Waited for that.
I think they've done up there too much.
I heard he sold it.
What's that?
I heard he sold it, sail bar.
Oh, really?
Any changes on Virgil's? Looks like he reduced his.
Everything looks the same.
He lowered it a little bit.
Yeah, what's that budget, one of you last year?
Just a little bit less.
Come back on his travel budget.
Yeah.
Travel and salary.
Yeah. Okay. The rural attorney has to be the same. Page thirty-seven.
What's the H C P T grant? For transportation?
For transportation, that's the grant, if you get grant money for.
Okay. Twenty-one be our last year payment on that?
For a attorney.
Twenty-two.
I think there's one.
Was it, was it a four-year fight?
Four-year.
And eighteen was that paying her, Stephanie, or was that paying? Or was that paying uh the others that were here, Ryan and Britton?
That's ten, Stephanie.
Okay.
So are we all the way over to?
Page thirty-nine.
See, they didn't, they didn't, they don't pay in them guys at all.
No, they're like.
Four of them are sorry.
Yep. Jim Radner's. Jim Radner's, this would be the last year of it.
Oh, nice.
Ready?
Yeah. Yeah.
How easy does we just set ourselves, Carla?
Well, these depend on what, on what the others' budgets are, like emergency management. I'll have to check and see what her budget is and you just have to have enough to cover that. Nine-one-one. It's kinda the same way, we do get money for that, but it only covers about half of it probably.
I think it's been twenty-two thousand one hundred for a few years though.
Yeah, it hasn't increased much. Winner hasn't increased their rate for either, so. And the general fund transfer out, the opt-out and highway and bridge. That depends on whether you ask for the full two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the opt-out or if you ask for that.
Emergency manager was a new transfer out because we didn't do the grant. We did, we had to add the transfer out because we didn't do the grant to pay after we just.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
It is more now because we can do the grant.
Right.
To pay for the way we're doing it.
What about like?
We don't fill that in. Yeah.
We can come back to that one after.
Out for the big ones.
Yeah. The fun one.
Should we do part one? I suppose that varies depending on how many employees are. Cause last year, we got one more than last year, is that right?
I always budget for seven.
Always budget for seven? Good.
The insurance will be different depending on the people that are there right now.
How many's out there now? Seven?
Does that include Jerry and Val?
They're on a separate name above.
Okay.
Seven.
Seven employees.
Nine. Eleven.
Worker's security, that won't work.
This is just.
Oh, he said that would be. I said it just as on record.
Is that counting Keith and?
Those are two, they're part-time, they're on a separate.
But they're part of the seven, right?
No?
Budget for seven, full-time and then two part-time and Jerry and Val's on a separate. On my sheet, but this number will be close. The insurance will just be the same.
If you leave the wages the same, that should be.
Yeah, we just gave them that big raise, so should leave it safe, right?
We didn't give them a very big raise.
They didn't?
They got, they got a dollar though, didn't they?
Yeah, a dollar or something.
Or was it clay of a teen? Sixteen-eleven, so it was.
Four thirty-nine.
Dollar thirty-nine. Yeah, just leave it.
So the four percent you wrote down in here, that's like a, that's not, that's like a cost of living increase or is that?
Bella wrote that in.
Oh, okay.
She filled out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I see they didn't budget for gravel crushing though.
They do have. Well, they didn't do any grit royalties or anything, no. They did put in for a fifty thousand for buildings, new buildings.
Some box.
Some on the backside of it. And they put in three thirty, is that for the motor grader or something?
I don't know, I was gonna ask, I checked calling her, my neighbor have got ahold of her, she's got, it looks like three-hundred-and-thirty thousand. But when you look at the bottom, it's eighty-five thousand total. So she, I don't know if she meant thirty-three thousand or three-hundred-and-thirty thousand, and I don't know what she had intended for that. Cause the motor grader payment is on the next sheet over on the backside. And it's. Seventy-nine thousand three hundred and one.
Well, we thought we could add in the royal components.
The H C P T. That's the payment there.
That's what we have left on the, yeah, motor grader. Unless she was going to buy another one, I don't know.
Did we talk about, I don't remember what we talked about first, equipment, I guess.
Maybe it's kinda one of them here then.
Right.
I just know what they got in mind.
I thought maybe she was coming in, but I.
Do we pay that blade off this January or not? It's this coming January.
This coming January. Let's do, January first, we were trying to figure out, oh, that was a more. We'll give us a grace period.
Oh. Right.
Gravel crushing, you wanna leave it back up at the two-fifty again? It's not gonna go down. I mean, it'll get it done.
The opt-out was not proposed, right?
It was not opposed, no, so we're fine.
So we're fine there. I would think you'd wanna at least have that much.
I think one year we didn't get behind, so I should crush it over here. Probably not a bad idea, but like I say, it might, the more you can crush, the better off you're gonna be because the price will never go down.
Mine does from time to time.
She just, can you do it on speakerphone?
Yes, I guess. I'd like to see her though.
There you go, you're on speakerphone.
Alright, we're looking at your budget sheet here. On the automotive major equipment.
Uh huh.
So what'd you put down on that? It looks like three-hundred-and-thirty thousand.
Yeah. Yep, um, let's see, I think she told me. Hundred-and-thirty thousand for a mini excavator.
Okay.
And, let's see, I gotta write down on that. Finally. Okay. Okay, and then, um. Okay. One, okay, two. Two new mowers.
Two what? Mowers?
Uh huh.
Okay.
How much were they?
Um. They were around approximately fifteen to twenty thousand. So I think it was.
Each, right?
Yeah. Twenty thousand, I think, with each was what was in there. And, and then two. No, wait, three used trucks. And then one or two used pickups.
What kinda trucks?
Oh, just, um, you know, like, uh.
Just the tractors?
Semi-trucks.
Tractors, okay. What's he guessing the cost on them?
Uh, thirty-five thousand to forty thousand.
That's about a hundred, a hundred thousand there? Two, seven, that'd be alright, and two pickups, that's sixty, right? But two, two, yeah, fifty, sixty, two pickups, sorry. I guess. That would come up to three-thirty.
What are you saying, forty thousand for pickups?
I was, I put down fifty-ish.
Forty would be left.
What, what's his thoughts on the mini excavator, what would?
What's that?
What's his, what would be his thoughts on having a mini excavator, I don't, I guess I would, I don't see. I mean, we got a backhoe, right?
He just told me. That he wanted to put it in the budget.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, he's here, if you wanna talk to him.
Yeah, I'll be, great.
Okay, alright, I'll, I'll put him on.
Hey Jerry, how you doing?
Hello, alright.
Good. We're just going through the budget, trying to see what, all it gets numbers, it's hard to tell what everything's for until a guy talks to you. Um, on the mini excavator, what would be the, I guess. The feasibility of having one, I guess, we got, we got a little backhoe now, right?
Yeah, but, well, what, more and more we run into shit we can't reach with it. And especially cleaning out on them bridges, we still got bridges that got crap under and we can't get out.
Right.
And you can drag shit out of there, chain, but you never, I mean, you can do that for a month on some of them bridges. Just get little pieces of crap.
Would it be feasible to rent one to, you know, if the guy has three or four bridges lined out, rent one and not have to have all the maintenance and the? Payments?
Uh, you could, but then when you want one, you don't have one. Um, and there's places, you know, we can't get in the ditches like on that timber road and clean all that muck out of there. And I don't think that road's ever gonna be right, no guy does.
Oh, sure.
But there's other places like that too.
But why, why a mini excavator, not just a regular one?
All for about twice the price. It's, uh. It's surprising how big it is, you know, you see them little mini excavators, but this one's got twenty-seven footer each and it can lift, I think you said seven thousand pounds.
Would they put coves?
And a lot of coves.
What, what did you guys think about gravel crushing for next year?
Well, we're gonna need some up to, uh, deep dredge, for sure.
So like, maybe like forty thousand again, fifty thousand?
Yeah, something like that, probably.
Tons, I'm talking tons.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And then you said, uh, there's a item on here that says, uh. For under buildings and. And major improvement, fifty thousand, were you thinking about a building or something?
Oh, well, is, is your guys still thinking about Milesville shop?
Yeah.
Then we need to do a bunch of work on our oil shop, that thing's gonna blow over.
Okay.
Posts are all rotted out, huh?
Right. Yeah, I gave them pictures last year of that, the posts were all rotted out up at Rob's flat.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And the cars, our trucks are wore out and my pickups are wore out. I can't take three of them trucks around at the same time.
Too much help.
What's that?
Too much help.
Uh, that's why we get so much done.
Forty, I think we'll go with that on that.
Well, if we have any more questions? I guess I don't. That was a major question we had, I guess.
Well, I'm sorry.
We're just going over your budget right now, so. Alright, well, if we got any more questions, we can call, call you back or something.
And I'd like to get these guys a dollar on our raise too.
Okay, we're gonna, we're going over things now, so.
Well, alrighty.
Alright, alright, thanks Jerry.
Yep.
So you wanna stay at the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for gravel?
I think so. I think so, and if we're gonna do the opt-out, I think that's where it needs to go.
And, uh, so I see you dropped down about thirty thousand on fuel.
How you gonna haul gravel?
Yeah. I don't think we should drop down on that. Leave it up there where it was or maybe even go up another? Ten or twenty.
Leave it, leave it there, it's, they don't, none of the years before they've hit it, and I know probably the fuel are a lot higher.
Leave it at one thirty.
Yep. So, so the, the four percent increase that she put at the top. Do you think that's no?
Fairway? They're leaving the way they are, we just give the raise. We just went to seventeen, Benway.
Seventeen fifty.
Huh?
Seventeen fifty.
Seventeen fifty.
So if you do the two-fifty for crushing, do you have to do the fifty thousand for royalties?
Should. Hold that in on the other side. Then if you're gonna get them four percent or if you're gonna get anybody else four percent?
And royalty prices are probably gonna be different, sounds like everybody's wanting that fifty cents more. It's a dollar now, isn't it?
What?
A royalty.
Yeah. A buck.
It's a dollar right now.
They wanna go to one-fifty?
I don't know, I, I know there was some.
You better figure at least fifty thousand for royalty then.
That's what I, what's you have to do this year.
For forty thousand yards, or you are, yeah.
Fifty is good.
Well, forty thousand yards is gonna cost you two-hundred thousand dollars plus probably fifty thousand for royalty. Roughly.
They're separate, so. I put fifty on royalty.
I mean, I think that's where the opt-out money should go.
Probably should be in that home.
That seems like it disappears as fast as.
Where does, where does, uh?
Twenty thousand.
Where does Rudy's, uh, if we hire Rudy, where does that go down under?
I think it's gonna come with professional fees.
Professional fees?
Because we hire him to do a service.
So where's that? Is that the one with four twenty-two?
Yeah, four two, four two-two, four twenty-two.
They've only got that, that four thousand.
I don't, I don't think she budgeted anything for Holland this year. And I don't, it doesn't look like she has anything going last year either.
Did last?
So you're, we had him home?
Yeah, it was two years ago.
Nineteen and a half?
We got him home.
Or seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, that's probably a lot.
So is that the sixty-four?
Well, you must be, but I thought he said he was hauling this year, so.
Uh, he has been.
So that would.
Just not a whole lot, I think, well, the last bill was only like a thousand dollars.
Oh, Jay, Baxter kinda asked, we gotta hold a jury and haul the concrete out of that place. Tell me those.
Oh, I see him hauling, I didn't know where they were coming from.
Yeah, I don't know if they're going to the bridge, or if they stockpile.
Where's it, where's it, where's you?
Uh, Midwest of Long.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think it's going east.
I agree too.
Cause I met him coming, they were coming uphill and I tried to watch, see where they went.
Jay's appreciative too.
Get rid of it?
Yeah, like they're doing a good turn.
Is there quite a bit of it?
Probably do.
Well, I think so.
The county's just hauling it off for him, basically?
They're breaking it up.
They're loading them pretty full.
Yeah.
Hopefully it goes well, dump.
They're just using the two dump trucks?
Yeah, yeah. How long have they been doing that, you know?
Well, it's in the week, I, I don't know what they, they start.
No, no, it doesn't have the wages.
They return.
So where is it where they pay off though?
It's on page forty-three.
What is, not in the county budget, it's out of the general, that service?
No, it's, it's part of the highway, it's the highway actually and.
I see. Seventy-nine thousand?
That's what the payment is.
Yeah, that's what we have left. So then if you left the wages, the statement's one million, six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, one point three.
It was what?
One million, six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, one point three-three. Actually, how's the insurance? Probably.
Still not so sure on a mini excavator, probably do the best.
I wouldn't know, I would. Don't know the advantage to it, could you get down in weather spots then, work?
Yeah, a little bit, the tracks, the track, and they'll get down.
Don't sink like the tractor.
So, so.
You get stuck too.
I know.
Ain't no stuck.
When they do that, if he was doing it, you wanna get rid of the muck, so you get out, put a pipe through it, or just get the wet out, but dry it, what, what's the purpose?
I don't know.
Like, for taking those trees out, uh, he's talking about dragging them trees out, now, when they're under my house, my bridge, they had, they were trying to drag it out with a chain and a cat, is what they were, what the hell they did.
Piece of the time.
Piece of the time, yeah.
I know, and Wilbur, that's just the ugly shit, you know, backs up for six yards or more.
And they couldn't get a lot of it, like those box coves stacked up by, or his bolons, they just couldn't reach it, it's still plugged. They just, they couldn't get to it, cause they couldn't get close enough, you know?
You almost think you hire somebody to come do some of that stuff, you know? And no maintenance, nobody tipping it off the bridge into the hole or maintenance.
And then they're having somebody tie it up doing that instead of doing roads.
Right, you'd have to get two or three people tied up by then, probably just.
You still probably gonna have to have trucks to haul some of that off, really. Little loader there, a little, some of it on that, so they get it drug out.
If you take the hundred-and-thirty and the fifty, they put down for a building and build a building, and you build a pretty nice building for eighty thousand dollars, I mean, a decent one. Maybe you'd almost want a building or shop more than you would that mini, but I don't know.
I was kinda thought of work, if they're gonna do it in Milesville to tie up, say, with the fire department, or whatever, but you have that in my house, it's taken out. I don't know if that's, you should be thought of.
I'd be in favor of that if there's a wall, if locked door.
If what?
If there's a wall.
Yes, to different entities.
Cause you know, haze, they do that a little bit, but I've kinda heard people say, well, it'd be just, make more sense just to have your own shop and not have to deal with anyone else. To you, I don't know.
Cut it in half, somebody come in the west, and somebody in the east. Don't know. Be a debate.
I mean, just like this year, they've had, haven't had much, any extra people sitting around by the time they're blazing and trying to get roads done. Take half of them to go do, clean out coves, I guess.
Yeah, and then you get them dug out, and then maybe you won't have to do it for ten years, maybe you'll have to do it next year, you know, you never know.
Right, and there's another, maintenance, lawn trimmers.
It's not something, you can't use it around, I mean, you could use it putting coves in or whatever, but.
So thirty-two, two fifty.
But you can also use backhoe.
Yeah.
Or whatever you got.
So, I really don't know about the backhoe, would it make more sense to bring that to a larger backhoe? Does that solve anything?
Extended boom or?
That one, that one does have an extended boom on it, I think it only goes about twelve or thirteen feet deep, maybe? Can't, it's been a while since.
Well, what he was talking about.
Right, twenty-seven foot is a long reach.
Then again, like you say, is having somebody operating, know what to do when you got that extended out that far, and you snag into something that's solid.
We haven't tipped over a truck in two years. I just know we got about more, more equipment than we got peeled around. The mowers definitely, I think, probably need to be updated. Pickups, pickups need updated, trucks need to be updated. We added two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, probably need to move something else around a little bit, putting that gravel back on it. Probably some money down for hauling it, if you hire somebody to haul.
Yeah, it almost ain't too long, of course, it's, nothing's saying you're gonna get Rudy either. He's gonna be as cheap as any, even more cheaper than anybody else, you may not get him anyway if you want.
No.
I know if we're gonna.
You gotta let him know months ahead of time, cause by the time we make up our mind at budget time, it's too late. That's what it has been the last couple of years anyway.
Yeah.
You gotta let him know one time ahead.
Yeah.
So we could be now for next year.
Yeah, pretty much booked out for Jackson County all this year.
So at our, at our meeting, we thought I'd have to get on Jerry's, some page of Jerry about going out very far, you know, like, expectation would be a lot easier.
Yeah, and the weather all plays into it too. It's wet, you can't do it anyway. I know they just put a bunch of money in that backhoe we got, they put all the pins and everything in, it's all good.
I don't think there's anybody around with one that can come and do that stuff.
Collar's got one.
You think?
Yep, they got big, I think it's huge, and then, uh, McCree's has got one. I don't think Jones has got one, Peter's got a mini one, smaller one. Those are the only excavators I can think of.
Before we decide how much we're gonna spend in Iowa, I think we're gonna have to get all the other nailed down, see what our income, outcome, you know, income expense is gonna be.
Yeah.
Can be in a hole and hole, so. We might have to figure out everything else.
Where else to cut, yeah.
But you guys are talking, though, in the three, this, uh, track hole, if we don't go that way, that budget's something for one of the locals that were mentioned to do some of the work. I don't, I don't know which ones are real pertinent right now, but he said the one, four, like, way here.
That wouldn't be budgeted for this year anyway.
So. That's just me, they can't get it done everywhere, and they get one and it has or shouldn't be done.
I think, I think we should come back to this, this M and M game.
Cause I mean, you wouldn't be, or the excavator wouldn't be on this year's budget anyway, it'd be next year's, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But maybe we need to figure out how to get some of that stuff done yet, this year.
So what were we at?
Yeah.
About million and six.
One million, six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand.
That's where we're at right now, in this budget.
That was with adding in some crushing?
Yeah, I added two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to crushing, move the fuel back up to a hundred-and-thirty thousand, and add a fifty thousand for royalty.
And then anything for hauling?
I did not. That would be under the four thousand. I guess.
Think fifty thousand dollars on that?
With the professional fee.
On the hauling, yeah.
Yeah, professional fee, services. You said fifty?
Yeah, what's that?
Add fifty or change it to fifty?
Change it to fifty.
Yeah.
So that'd take us up to a million, seven, oh, three, one thirty-three.
What did you take us to?
A million, seven, oh, three, one thirty-three.
Sorry. Walk thirty here.
Every year try to do something.
Oh, I know.
We're not putting anything in the building fund now, so.
We're not, we're not, unless they're like, changing some other stuff around, I wouldn't think.
That's okay.
Uh, you mean that?
Oh.
You mean that fifty thousand? Three hundred right there?
Um, he's wondering about putting more down on that building.
Oh.
But I mean, you guys are gonna have to, I guess, I don't know, I don't, I think that'd be more important than the mini excavator, that's me, but I don't know. And I'm not doing the work, so I guess it's, it's not.
How big is the shop that's there, in Milesville?
It's.
Say, fifteen maybe wide? Fifteen, it's not.
It's not, it's not long enough to get the motor grader in it.
Not the new ones, but it would get the old ones in, the old one forty-eight ages or whatever, get those in without the plow on it.
Without the plow.
Without the plow.
And that's, I mean, or, what do we have, a three-hundred and some, three-hundred and some thousand dollar investment, we gotta leave set outside because we don't have a shop to put it in.
Is it, I question the, the validity of having it up there. I mean, they all start out at the shop out here in the morning, you don't have anybody living there.
Twenty-five miles, driving twenty miles an hour to get up there.
Yeah, and in, in the wintertime, when the people gotta get to school and stuff like that, or get out, they were kinda just running around doing this and that, and skipping over most of the drives and stuff last winter.
I'm just curious if it, you know, I don't know.
Well, I think originally, or I think sometime down the line.
How many days, how many days of winter do you, do you, uh, plow snow it?
But how much time do we spend over a year having somebody drive all the way up there and, and, and up there, and the mileage on that equipment and everything else too?
They're driving up there anyway.
Well, not, maybe it won't be, maybe you should do the same thing you're doing in Rob's flat, have somebody there.
I don't know, it's just.
I guess that's.
I question the, if it's, makes feasible sense to, you know, to build a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar shop, that's big enough to hold a rotor, road grader, or do work in. How many times can you run up and down the road instead? I don't know, summertime, you don't need to park inside.
Who, who's usually the guy that uses that blade to clear the snow with?
Dave, right now.
Dave Johansson, yeah.
Comes from Cogwood, drives through Phillip. I think we should look our data.
Something we should visit with Jerry about, maybe, dude, he, he would have a better idea than we probably would. How important. Something to talk about though.
Well, the roads have not decreased up there, and you used to have a shop there and a person there, now you don't have either one, so, yeah, it's really feasible not to have somebody up there.
I think. Ideally, it'd be, if you're gonna build a shop, it would be, make more sense to have somebody live up there.
Right.
If you're gonna invest in the shop, but.
I don't know how much shop you need, you need just big enough for the main diner?
Yeah, I would say, I don't think you need to have a shop like, what's in Midland or Phillip, I don't think.
I don't know, I'm just, just throwing it out there.
I would say you just, just a whole barn type of building, you know?
Yeah, their floors, but it wouldn't warm up, melt off the blade in the night.
Depends, I may have.
That's the biggest perk down here, but then it doesn't cost enough for heat, cause it's got hot water heat, bring it in at night and you can't.
Well, you can't get them all in at night down here.
No, we get two down here, two in Midland, just four of them. Like I say, if you had one of them clear up there, so, most of them get put inside at night, you can get three in, three in down here, pickups around.
I'm just throwing it out there.
No, yeah.
It used to be, you know, Huey and Raymond and all them guys lived up at the canny.
Yeah, Raymond used to sleep on top of the blade while it was warming up, melting off, wintertime, and then leave whenever he got his nap done.
And I get it, I mean, I know they don't run with crap unless they're stored inside.
What if you have an emergency, or can't get an ambulance in or anything, because you don't have any, oh, your ambulance, follow the motor grader up there at twenty-five mile an hour, all the way up there, and then. I guess I just, I, I think it's important to maybe try to invest in that area a little bit more again, and maybe get somebody in that area that's interested, or, cause there's a lot of young people coming up there. Could supplement their income on the ranch or farm. And they'd be invested in that area then too. I know there's a lot of time wasted between running from here and here to there, on whatever. They wrote their work sheet out at, uh, right now on, I went out there at nine o'clock in the morning, they start at six, and they got there just before me. So three hours it took them, don't know what they were doing for three hours before they got to work.
Got out there at nine, is that what you said?
Yep. Might've had a safety meeting that morning or something, but I didn't check in yet. I just know it was nine o'clock before they showed up. And all their equipment was there. But even with the fifty thousand that he's got sitting there now, is that's. Yeah, up taking up on, on probably fixing Roy's building. Going in and redoing all the posts and that.
That one heated?
I don't think he can get his.
Yeah.
With the plow on, he can't get it, can he?
I think he can.
Not with the plow, you gotta drop the plow off, leaves, back sand drops the plow off and just, the only leaves just pulls up, puts back on. It's not too hard to put on. Just hooks on the front of the scare fire and then two pins. But I, I don't know if he puts it in very often. Imagine if I just plug it in and in. It's a two stall, it's got a small door and then a big door. Yo, I bet it won't fit in there. Can't remember.
I'm pretty sure you can't put the blade on it, have it in there.
The plow, no, no, I know what one.
Maybe you can without it though. Which in the summertime you can put it in. Maybe, you know.
Right.
I would, we talked one time, well, instead of putting it in Milesville, put it up on the highway, up there at the Billsburg or whatever.
Over at the, one of Milesville. Yeah.
Something to think about too, you know, what if the road's blocked going from the highway to, you know, Bill's.
Milesville.
Milesville, I mean.
That has been a problem.
If you're gonna invest all that money, maybe you should have it on the highway over it. Then you gotta buy a piece of ground then.
And then you also got all the traffic from. That way.
Walk over here. Like you.
I know my uncle donated the land for that. Eight western, I don't think, I don't think we paid anything, but I did pay, or it was, it wasn't much.
At least.
At least, yeah.
At least.
A real cheap lease.
Up there Hudson's, yeah, it's a dollar a year. Yeah, it's something silly, a dollar a year.
I wouldn't mind seeing, at least looking into it.
No, that's what I agree.
That's the used truck.
Seeing we can do something.
Thank you.
That's all the things she listed, more, a mini excavator, used truck.
Cause you know, you contacted a couple of.
In two mowers, yep.
They might help a guy out too, finds a piece of ground or something.
Two mowers.
Two mowers.
Bet those people that live on, I don't know who owns that land right there too.
Berries.
Berries?
Yeah, he owns on the north side, right, and then on the south side is, uh.
Eunice's.
Eunice's and the Knight, Bob Knight owns that one. Of course.
I think if, I think if a guy was gonna look at it, see a berry do something a little bit just west of the, that clinic there, it's kind of a high spot right there. And I think there's approach right there too. Just west of the.
Probably got power right there.
Yeah.
Most part.
And it wouldn't really cut out of his field too much either if a guy was looking at that. Guy could follow.
At that time, we was talking about, you know, possibly even including the state, if they, they have, don't they have sand pile there?
Yeah, I don't know if that's a lease or whatever either from, uh, Radway. It's a lease.
But you could almost incorporate the state and the county and the fire department into that. That might be worth, yeah. There you go. But who's boss? That's all that matters.
You won't stay out of my mess.
Yeah. But that's just a thought, I don't know. We thought about that too. I don't know what the answer is. Forty by, what would they have to be long to get the plow in there?
Fifty foot?
Sixty?
Sixty.
Thirty by sixty or something? Don't know.
Cool. I don't know, check with Jerry, see what it's costing to put up that building over here on Lake Estates Road, Jerry Patterson.
Oh, is he putting one up?
Yeah, it's eighty foot wide by, I don't know how long.
Where's that at, Mike?
It's gonna be out on Airport Road.
That's big. Nice one, fifty by hundred.
Should come back to this though.
Yeah. From one three to one seven, that should be a pretty good increase, right?
Eighty to forty-four has been the same, I think.
We're leaving at forty-seven. Emergency manager looks about the same.
It is, it comes out to be thirty-two thousand two forty-four. I put the wages back.
What was it again, thirty?
Thirty-two thousand two forty-four. So then on the nine-one-one transfer, we put thirty-two thousand two fifty that transferred.
That's not forty-six, we're talking about now?
That, that one that we skipped over for the transfer.
It's thirty-nine, we got.
Oh.
Transferring out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I just put that number in there.
Okay.
Anything on that one?
Will she have the utilities, the home bill?
Yeah.
What's her other expenses?
Any rental expense? Like if she has to get anything right there or anything like that, I suppose.
Furniture and equipment?
I don't see anything.
Nothing on that.
Her, uh, what's the furniture equipment?
Uh, she put in last year for those, um, tracking iPads, but we got the grant for those. So we didn't actually. Pay for those. So I mean, like computers or, I suppose it might have some. They have maintenance fees and stuff on those or not? I don't know.
Probably, but that shouldn't be up in.
Well, she doesn't have her personal either or anything.
No, the other expenses.
I think maybe a lot of her.
Cause like her, um. Alerts. The fee for that comes out as her other expenses, like that's where the, any maintenance fee for iPad and stuff comes out of it.
And those we just got this year, so that's probably why that's a little bit higher. I'm not sure what she was planning for the equipment.
What, what's the, what's the emergency and disaster?
My emergency.
In the back there.
That's the rest of the.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just a, it's just coming from, is it okay?
Yeah, it's a two page and I just.
Okay.
Did enter one, yeah.
Some of them just keeps getting bigger and bigger, maybe.
They won't pay for any of it. It was zero when we started. There was none.
Yeah, there was.
Maybe a tiny.
Lola was that's just doing it?
Yeah. It was like almost as, it was barely as in existence.
Nothing? I think it's about five hundred in the light building, shouldn't have that on there.
How much?
Oh, I see around the.
Oh, yeah.
It is, it just that little bit, but that's.
That's good, she just added that on the other expenses down below.
Good on that one. Uh, domestic abuse, we were paying five hundred the last couple of years, that's the one that we're required to pay out. We pay that to domestic or. Yep. Yep. And then the building fund.
Courthouse?
Yeah, page forty-eight. We didn't put anything, cause we didn't know if you were gonna do the. Budget for the roof or anything like that.
Better on that one.
So that's what from last year, I think for what has on there?
So does the work that's gonna be done on that, on the brick, is that gonna be on this year's?
Yep.
Budget?
We have to supplement all that.
We ain't budgeting for it.
Well, we have the, the assignment. And we did get the two grants, yeah, for twenty-two thousand.
The budget will probably have to supplement because it will be, because of that.
Right.
We got the cash, yeah.
The cash to pay.
So we didn't know if you wanted to leave it at twelve thousand and supplement it when you decide to do it or.
The roof?
Yeah. Or just add it in now.
Are you supposed to be scheduled for next year?
The.
We've never, no, we haven't contacted anybody yet.
Oh, yeah.
We have a quote.
Well, we got a quote, but he said he's like a year out and you have to open it up for a bit, so. So if you're gonna do it next year, you probably can open it up this fall.
Just budget sixty thousand? Next year probably seventy-five thousand?
Yeah. You budget the sixty, then you gotta, you get a little bit out of that capital, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have the money.
Yeah, I would, I would budget some for it anyway, and try to get it done.
Thanks, I agree.
That's probably important.
So when you put out those deals for bids, you just put out there saying this is when you want it done, like next year, like?
I don't think you can get anyone that could do it anytime, just hearing anyone put out your bid, then I was just kidding.
Right, just so I make sure. Right, but I don't.
We don't get it till like.
Right. We would have put, when you put the bid out there, let them know it doesn't need to be done till next year, cause we're budgeted for it.
Yeah, we've been working on it.
Right.
Twenty-one.
So they can schedule however they want, if that works?
And we're going out to the ground.
Right.
All right, but is that fifty-five representing what that person quoted? Is that how you come up with that?
That's what he told us, you know, if we did it this year.
Yeah.
They're the longest that flipped out.
And they come down to repair it.
I probably like, like did it over there for a long way.
He did the, he did it the last time for the, how long ago was that? I can't remember when it came.
The roof?
Yeah.
Like, what'd we say, around fourteen or so years ago?
Yeah, I think.
I thought it was windows.
No, the roof was, we exceeded the ten to more here.
That's why we repaired it in like fourteen fifteen.
That's a. Help a lot of that, that's not lasting very long.
So those mean skin for.
Steeped flat roofs? Yeah.
They go two thousand four.
Four. She had one of them spires up there.
Yeah?
Yeah.
That'll be a piece, that's where. Yeah, we should put one on. We'll just.
Well, I wondered.
I wonder around the building. What I put in the building? Put a tower up there, put a motor on the side.
When they do that, do they, they have to remove the old stuff, you know, I don't even know. Or they just go over top of it?
They have to pull it off.
Pull it off.
They take it off because they said that there's, I don't even. Put that kind of roof on anymore, there's a new.
Oh, yeah.
One that lasts seven years. It costs more.
Yeah.
Yeah, wasn't they were up there fixing it, they're like, oh, we don't have to sell this one anymore, like.
Cause it wasn't any good.
Only lots of candy.
Yeah, good for Moses's building and.
So you wanna put sixty in there then?
Probably what you want me to put.
I would put something in there.
Yeah.
You know, I gotta start somewhere.
Sixty?
The six.
Yeah.
What, what's your thing?
Number, page forty-nine, we just skipped.
Okay.
And fifty, yeah.
Page fifty-one is the library checking account. So we just have to have fifteen hundred in there in case they use any of their money, cause it reflects on our side.
Those bids for Moses's building and stuff, I could lay them on there, almost didn't happen to them. Somebody looking at it?
And then.
What are you looking for?
That bid for Moses's building and. And the carpet, well, carpet, everybody had it all, a copy of it.
Then page fifty-two, that's the money that Fred collects from his testing and then you can expend some of it, so. We haven't expended more than we've taken in. Did four hundred on that. And then the last page is just Tracy's M and P. Well, I guess that's always been something else.
That hasn't been used for a while though, huh?
Well, sometimes she does, but I suppose it depends if she has to buy a new computer or whatever for it. In seventeen, she used that four thousand.
Find it?
Eight little.
She used nineteen hundred, two hundred, but.
Carpet was.
I don't really know what. She gets a, she get a bill every month.
Courthouse deal.
We're putting it in the courthouse, courtroom, they're gonna add a line.
And then that's probably why. Those were just. Those were just the monthly bills. It's usually like.
Build the, build the city or build the state. Reuse, use. That was the fund that she used to pay extra help.
Yeah, I wonder how that works out.
They were working on her books, redoing, copying them.
I don't know about that.
She used that money to pay for her employee.
Oh, wasn't that a grant, the one she did that?
Come out of that M and P.
I just know that we get like a seven dollar monthly bill.
You guys wanna have. I guess I'd like to know what she's asking. She has a spending, she had that much last year.
Got something though, cash and. See now when they run all the numbers through, we'll see.
Is this what I'm looking for? Right here? No. Cash management. Bank balance.
This is her total cash.
That's what this is, school, school and everything. Oh, I thought I was really losing my mind. Couldn't find like bids for Moses' and stuff, I thought I laid them over there and then I turn around and this is gone.
Oh, you get it now? Still lost?
Yeah, I'm still, you lost that too? Did she have the bid too? No, she, I don't know.
Good afternoon. Questions about the M and P fund?
Yeah.
No? Okay, alright, I'll talk to you later.
What's your question?
Question? What's it used for?
It's for modernization and preservation. Okay, so it can be used for, we have a variety of things we can use it for. We have laws that tell us what we can't use it for. So we, um, like we can't use it for salary. We can't use it for things that we have kinda grandfathered in over the years, like if you've already been. Paying for certain things out of your other fund supplies or whatever, you can't arbitrarily switch over to the M and P fund. The M and P, um, is designed to give us some extra funding to be able to modernize our offices. Because there's a lot of registers of deeds who don't have all the up technology that we need for various things. It could be getting your book scanned in, things like that. We were able, years ago I used it for contract labor, I could do it for that, but I cannot use it for salary, so. One of the things I'm kind of looking at, and it's expensive, and that's why I haven't done a whole lot with it lately, but. One of the things I've been looking at is getting all of my records redacted. Because in order for me to email copies of my instruments. I have to be sure that I am not emailing or faxing, I don't do much faxing, but. I can't do anything that has any personal identifying information in it, that's a misdemeanor. So I have to be careful of the records that I do email. And I can have a company go in and take all the records and actually go through and redact them. But it costs right around, last I checked into it, it's about twenty-two thousand dollars. So I'm kind of biding my time a little bit, hoping for other technology, other, you know, company, there's, there's a few companies that do it, but. Of course you want someone that's kinda familiar with the record system that you're using, so. Anyway, so that's kind of what I'm thinking of down the road so that I can utilize my records better.
Company does that, a human being reads it and then.
Well, they have computer programs that go through and do that, um, so yeah. It's a software program. Other questions about it?
No, I was just curious what the seven thousand is for because.
Well, I always put it into my budget so that, for instance, um. If I, if I do have something that I may need to replace or change or. A new software program or something, I, by having it in my budget, I have access to it. If I don't put it in my budget, then you guys would have to supplement it. So that's one way for me to utilize it even whether I use it or not. Does that make sense to you?
And you got all your books scanned now, don't you?
Yes, well, all the real estate books, I don't have any of the index books.
Right, and that indexing is a whole.
And that's a whole different ball of wax and I'm, I'm really leery of what to do with that because if I computerize it right now, what it would mean, because. They don't have a scanner big enough to do the pages. The way they are. I can get a very large, I can rent a very large flatbed scanner that would run me about eight or nine thousand dollars. And possibly do it that way, but then you still have your valley with your shadow down the center. Some of our old index books are laminated. And trying to do that, some of those are tough to read anyway. A lot of times it's guesswork, you get in there and you're just guessing, trying to guess what book they wrote, what number it is or what letter it is. So I have been dragging my feet on it, I know it's something I need to get done, but I just hate to. Jump into something I don't have to do, I don't wanna cut my books apart because it means I'd either have to spend the money to rebind them, which would be horribly expensive. Or box them up, nobody gets to see them again, pretty much, and. Nick knows how much fun that would be, so.
A lot of history there, it's really neat.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I seen some of those copies at the flash, it was really good.
So I'm just kinda dragging my feet on my index books a little bit, but I know I'm gonna have to bite the bullet and do something eventually. Other questions or? Other than that, you're gonna throw an extra hundred thousand or so in there for me just in case?
Yep, so we take it back when we finalize it.
Perfect.
Make you feel happy and then take it all away.
Won't be the first time I've done that.
I know. God, when I first started, you remember that, we go through all this stuff and then turn around and have to spend three days.
Oh, everybody walked in with their budget, you guys were like, yeah, no problem, we, we need to do that, you betcha, we'll find the money for that somewhere.
And then start cutting.
Yeah, reality. It's kinda how it works in my house too.
Yeah, that is for sure. Look what I just bought, a new car.
On the upside, that was the last page of the first look through. Oh, gotcha.
See the time?
You guys are making good progress.
Yeah.
Something like that. Making progress.
Believe the addict.
She's just so bossy over there. Thanks.
Yeah. Holler if you have something else to eat.
Okay. I think that's what you're gonna. Oh, it's a thing, right? Fifteen minutes, you'll have it all done. Twenty?
I have a man.
Look how much I can screw up in twenty minutes.
Allocate out to the schools and stuff. Yep, I think so. I'm just trying to, I'm wondering, how much do we have to pay out to the school?
That depends on what they request. We see, okay, the schools and the city will turn in a request and then we'll step the levy for that and then we'll collect that money. That doesn't go into our budget anywhere, that's separate from ours. And we collect the money and then we pay it out, but it, it has nothing to do with our budget, so it's not in there.
It's not in here anywhere, okay.
It doesn't show up in any of our figures for this, for our budget, or for our money in the general.
So you listen to actually what we have for. This is actually what we have, there's, there's two different funds here, right?
The green one is the highway and the yellow one is the general fund, yeah, yeah, two different funds.
I'm gonna write down some numbers, do you probably want these back?
No, you got, you got some in there.
Everybody's got one.
I'm gonna probably bog it up.
That's true.
It's the very last one that looks here. Very nasty.
Get him closer. It's got paperclip on it. So the first round should be good, right? Pretty close.
You want to put in the two hundred and fifty thousand for the opt-out, is that what your plan is?
We put it in for gravel, probably have to.
And then. We've always transferred money that replaced the old highway and bridge reserve levy that they won't let us do anymore. And we've been doing, setting aside twenty-four thousand to put into your bridge maintenance fund. Do you wanna continue that?
How much have we been putting in there?
Twenty-four thousand a year, cuz that's about equal to what the.
I was thinking that's the one that said for catastrophe repairs, highway one?
No, no.
Twenty-four thousand is your bridge inspection data.
Yeah, that, it goes to the bridge inspections, the bridge repairs, maintenance, that type of thing. It would be used if, when you get your, um, bridge grants to repair these bridges, you can use that money to help cover the county cost of it.
Probably keep doing that, I would think.
So when you're thinking of applying money?
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So this is the only one we got now, so far, yeah.
Perfect.
We opt-out, they wanna collect the full amount, they don't.
Good.
On the CPI, do you wanna use the CPI or do you wanna store the CPI?
So we store it for what, three years?
So you could store it and then pull it up later and use it?
So on the opt-out, take all of it? Store the CPI?
And then. Do you want to, I'm gonna do that at the meeting, but you can think about renewing your capital outlay. Resolution to set aside the seventy-five thousand for capital outlay and then a resolution for the ten thousand for the sheriff's vehicle. So you want us to put that amount in the budget?
For the, you put it in there every year?
For another three years, yeah, if you renew the resolutions, you go for another three years, it runs the same period as your opt-out, but. And you put seventy-five thousand in the capital accumulations account and ten thousand in the same account, but that ten thousand would be designated for a sheriff's vehicle. So to do that, I have to put it in the budget also.
Right, and that's not an added tax or nothing, it's just the way you're wording it, put it there?
I would say you should keep it because you'll need another vehicle by the end of the. I'll move on that time.
I just wanna make sure it wasn't raising taxes. Still questioning the whole mini excavator thing, but.
Walk that around somewhere else.
Yep.
You want me to leave it like it is to figure?
I'm sure we'll have to cut it something in that, we added four hundred thousand dollars to that budget. So I would imagine we'll be having to cut something there.
I'd be more interested in renting one, if he's got anybody can run one.
I know he can. And I know that they run lots somewhere to backhoe. I mean, I've ran one a little bit, but not.
What's it like moving that thing around, you gotta have a bigger truck or fit on what they got or?
If it's a mini one, you wouldn't, truck would haul it. The one that was talked about in the past, that one was too big, you wouldn't, you'd end up hauling it.
You can load it.
The two guys carrying the tires and moving them around in the front were just about.
We have the guys that qualify for that.
We did at one time.
Cats over the highway. They left the tires on us, it's gonna fall next time they want to use them. Just away alive.
Yep. I'm not saying it wouldn't be handy in spots, but I'd rather see him rent one first and see if they already think it's worth. So I think if you rented one, just have it planned out for a week, this is all we do, is get these, this, this and this, you rent it for a week, send it back, they change the oil, they. Next time you get one, it's just as nice a shape.
Still works?
Still works.
When it breaks down, you call them, don't come get it.
Yep.
I kinda agree with that. I'd, I'd like to see him try that first, you know, if they got some bad spots they need done. This is what I call doing, is leaving everything as is. For the total budget. Maybe Carl already has it figured too.
How'd you figure it?
Just added all these up.
That, that's spending everything you got?
Spinning one.
Every, yeah. Oh, so you added all these up to see where the budgets come out?
Yeah.
So that come out of that, close or what?
Yeah.
There was enough?
Yeah, I, I, I just brought a big, you know, I didn't put everything down there, it probably would be like this.
No, I just, I just didn't, where'd you get the total for out of this one?
For the highway?
Uh, for everything, right? Or you're just doing highway?
Yeah, and I did everything, I did all, every, every department. Stack with one seven, one seven for the highways.
Oh, okay, I see, yep.
There isn't any totals for the requests though. Unless you added.
I just did it myself and.
And see the money, I just gave you the two general fund and the. And see the money, I just gave you the two general fund and the highway fund, those are two main funds, like your domestic abuse money. That budget, it has money coming in to cover it yet, um, M and P fund, it has some money coming in to cover it too. So what you have there doesn't include those amounts coming in, so that will change too. So because what I'm saying is that total budget doesn't, it's come out of those two funds. There's other funds that cover areas of the budget.
There's like seven funds or something.
These are the two main ones.
Yeah. Not the ones that are just.
Courthouse building, it'll have twelve thousand dollars unless you want to, that's something to decide too. It has a levy, it's always been set at twelve thousand dollars because you've never taken the growth of the CPI on it either. You can take growth, you're storing your CPI, but you can take the growth for the courthouse building, which would add a little money to it. So is that something you want to do or do you want to just leave it at the twelve thousand?
I don't know, last few years we've spent a lot of money on the courthouse.
Horrible amount.
And you ain't done yet.
Get that. Tuck point done?
Yeah.
Roof?
Not at this time, I don't think we changing anything up. It's always good to have options later.
Well, you have money set aside to cover the subscription too, in addition to your twelve thousand that you don't get.
Well, the opt-outs would save us.
Yeah, exactly, that's what.
We weren't having.
It's impossible for you to set money aside.
Right, because otherwise it was taking everything that come in total, and we were going backwards, two hundred thousand dollars a year.
And we need to do, uh, do general.
I didn't add fifty thousand dollars for the roof and area building. That wouldn't be in there, I just, I didn't know.
And then didn't add the.
What was the tuck point?
Seventy-seven thousand.
Seventy-nine, eighty thousand, that won't be in less than.
That's not.
That won't be in two thousand twenty-one though.
Right, but it's not, it's not in last year's either, so it's got, now these numbers are used for future, right?
It'll probably be paid in twenty.
Because it's never.
Well, I've been funded.
We would have to supplement it.
Right.
Right, but that's actual cash to your budgets.
Yep, yeah, I don't know. It's like, I, you know, I gotta add fifty thousand on there and all that, what can I do? So.
That's crazy, isn't it? I used to buy a new combine. Couple of them is all.
It's a lot, it's a lot of money.
So when she puts in all those numbers, she'll use those numbers, I should tell us if we're going backwards or forward.
No kidding, when I started here, you had like sixty-six thousand dollars in the bank to cover all your expenses.
I remember that.
Got kind of serious tomorrow, about the tail end of October. Yeah, it's terrible.
Wanted cash in CDs and I was like, oh no, we're good, we're good, we're good. About a hundred and fifty dollars good, just like my checkbook, except for the fifteen dollars instead of a hundred and fifty.
We were in the red for, oh, several years.
Yeah, so that, that was.
After I was here, so I.
Yeah.
And they slimmed out.
Are we good?
A year.
Carl and I have a ton of work to do.
Now it looks pretty good, but at the same time, you don't want to screw it all back up. That's a tough deal.
Yeah, well, this, I guess we'll just talk about it, after you get your numbers crushed, we'll talk about it the next regular meeting. Where we sit.
Cause you'll have to decide on it soon.
Or have another meeting because.
Then for, for now, just leave the highway department at F O one seven, just as, just for now.
We added quite a bit.
One point, one point seven.
Should be interesting.
Do you guys want to go down and take a look downstairs at that?
Before we adjourn, since everybody kind of want to look at that.
We can adjourn outside, can't we?
Yeah, we can adjourn outside.
Just take their porter with us?
Where we adjourn?